2020, tonight we have one table matter and seven scheduled matters. These items have been published in the Webster Herald, but before we start tonight, I'd like us all to stand so we can pledge our allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathryn, would you call the board, please?
Yes. Mr. Barone?
Here.
Mr. DiNoto?
Here.
Mrs. Vollo, present? Mr. DiMarco?
Present.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Houser?
Here.
Mr. Artuso?
Now, the first table matter, I think we'll let Corinne read it into the record again, because it's been about a month since we heard it, so just for the people watching at home and for the board's benefit as well.
478 Ridge Road Garage, located at 478 Ridge Road, applicants Brian and Debbie Hyatt are requesting area variances to allow a five-foot side setback where 15 feet is required and a 14-foot rear setback where 50 feet is required for the construction of a 26-by-34-foot detached two-car garage on a .36 acre parcel having SPL number 078.15-1-33 located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 225-11B5B and 225-11B5C of the code of the town of Webster.
Okay, now, could you state your name and address for the record?
Debbie and Brian Hyatt, 478 Ridge Road, Webster.
Now, you could tell us, you were here about a month ago, I don't remember the exact date.
Yeah, it's about, a little over a month ago, I think.
But you got some feedback from the board that we wanted to see some setback on that side?
Yes.
So maybe you could tell us what you've done with your project?
Okay, we did everything you suggested. We tried to contact the church and go over a few different things to try to come to an agreement. It was very hard, first of all, to try to get ahold of them. I ended up finally calling the diocese and they gave me this father's phone number. And we had discussed buying 10 feet of land from them so that it would make everything of ours in code. They would not entertain that idea. So we asked if they would consider a maintenance easement. And he texted me back after about three or four days and said that he looked into the maintenance easement and it's too much for them and they don't, it's not going to be feasible. They gave their position and they're going to stand with whatever the board goes with.
Who did you speak with, the diocese?
Um...
Was it council for the diocese, or?
Um, yeah, it was the guy that handles all the maintenance and buildings from the diocese, and we also placed a second phone call to him, and he's never gotten back to us again.
Okay.
Trying to get answers, it's been really tough, that's why it took so long.
So you've reconfigured the building?
Yes, we reconfigured the building. It was going to be 28 by 34 with a six-foot overhang on the west, so we had them come back out and we went, like you suggested, we did 26 by 34, took the overhang off, so there's no six foot, and suggested moving it five feet.
Was there any discussion with the diocese as far as, you can't hear me?
No, he can't hear you.
Okay. Was there any discussion with the diocese with respect to the driveway that's on their property and the fence?
No. Oh, and I also did find the paperwork where we signed with the church saying that everybody was aware that all our stuff was on their property. So I did get ahold of that as well, and you guys have, all have copies of it. It was signed in 1995 by us, the church, and a Thomas De Salvo.
Is it like a fence affidavit, allowing you to have fence on their property? Is that what it is?
It's for all of it to be on their property. They know the fence, the driveway and the building was close to the line.
Messiah, I know you indicated that we all have a copy of it, I'm not entirely sure that's the case, but would you mind passing that up so I could take a look at it? Thank you.
Yeah.
Either way, you had to write to me, thank you. Appreciate it.
Council's checking it over, it's probably, it should be a recorded document, recorded to county, clearly if it was done properly.
Yeah.
If it was done properly.
I'm pretty sure it is, because, I mean, it's got the lawyer and the notary and the, so it should have been recorded.
Yeah.
And it was mailed to us by that lawyer.
Well, he's looking that over, I know Corinne indicated last meeting that she would rather see the rear setback lessened as long as you get aside, am I remembering correctly?
Yeah, we didn't really take an issue with the rear setback, but aside.
The side setback was really important to us because you can't work on the building without standing on church property.
Right, that's why we had suggested the maintenance easement.
And it was an opportunity for this board to correct something that was done incorrectly many, many years ago, even before you owned the property.
Right.
So we do appreciate your effort and, you know...
Yeah, they've done everything you've asked.
Trying to, trying to help us out with that. We have, what, a 14-foot rear setback at this point in time?
Yeah, and the only reason we're building that on is because we're also taking the shed down that's in the backyard, which I noted on the map.
Well, I, yeah, I might add that the lot is very...
Do you want a copy?
Yeah, the lot is very narrow, it's only 83 feet.
Yeah, that's true.
And so the stuff from the shed is going to be stored in the back of the garage behind the cars.
Yeah, I see that.
And we also configured it to go with one door, so it didn't quite look so bad for moving it over.
I just want to make sure I understand the document. It looks as though... Your property is 478 Ridge Road?
Yes.
Yes, right?
Yes.
Okay. And this document was brought to you in order to allow for St. Rita's to acquire a mortgage?
No.
It says at the bottom, it says, "The affidavit is made to induce the mortgaging of property known as 1008 Maple Drive."
Yeah, I don't know what that means, but...
That's St. Rita's address.
Yes.
Right, so that, it sounds as though the document was drafted because St. Rita's wanted to mortgage the property, and that the bank wanted to be clear that because there was a piece of the property that was adjacent to your property that you were using, I'm assuming, and that they wanted to be clear that you couldn't make any future claim, some adverse possession acquisition to that, so that if the bank ever had to foreclose on the St. Rita's property, they wouldn't run into a claim by another person that they also had an interest in the property. So this document appears to have originated from St. Rita's, not from your doing.
No, it isn't anything we did.
Okay, you just, how did, okay, so you just kept a copy of this when they came to you?
Yeah, they mailed it to us, they mailed, they said, "Bring on to this."
When did you close on your property?
We closed on our property in '84.
Yeah, this looks like they were mortgaging the property in '95.
Could have been when they built the new building.
Could have been.
They could have got financing for the new building.
Right. And, but I think, you know, clearly there's a, an inference that can be drawn here that they recognize that you were using this piece of property with their approval.
Okay, we should probably stay clear of that legal tangle and stick to the variance. What do you think, would that probably be the best way to proceed?
Yep.
Because, yeah, because technically your driveway shouldn't be on your property and the fence, and anybody on the board want a condition if we do make a motion for variance, condition on correcting any of that, or is that, technically, they can't go on St. Rita's property to remove it without permission, so maybe we should stay, stay clear.
Yeah, there is an agreement or at least notice between the two parties that...
Yeah, so St. Rita's does recognize that it's there.
Right, so we don't have to deal with it at this point.
Let's keep it, let's keep it...
I think there was some correspondence at the last meeting that St. Rita's wanted to make a move.
Well, we had a letter from the pastor, let me see if I can find that, but the pastor may not even be aware of this agreement.
It may not be, although this is acknowledging that St. Rita's is aware that the fence exists and that the driveway exists, that's all it's stating. This way somebody cannot say on a domain that, hey, we use this property for so long and now it's ours.
Right, right. So not, yeah, not making claim to it, okay. So let's have some discussion on the new request for variance, the five-foot side setback and the 14-foot rear setback. Anybody have any opinions?
Well, basically what we asked them to do, they've got enough space on the east side now so that they can maintain the building without going on to St. Rita's property and get a ladder if they need to, and they've taken it out of the rear setback, so it's pretty much exactly what we asked for.
Yeah, I've said it before, it's refreshing when an applicant goes back, redesigns and comes back with something that this board could pass, could work, could move on, okay. Anybody have any, any negative opinions about what we have here? I think, I think they've done what we've asked for, like Eric said. That's, that's an interesting stretch of road, there are that Ridge Road and that everything, you know, they're older homes, and many were built long before today's zoning laws were in place, so things are kind of tight there. It had kind of a, that old Ridge Road, West Webster was kind of a villagey atmosphere.
A little hamlet of its own, years ago.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, and we've seen other variances come, we're going to have another one tonight, as a matter of fact, with some sheds, so. Would somebody like to go through the standards?
Like I think it's been stated that the, the area that the residence is in is an older development and predates a lot of the zoning requirements that we're talking about right now. It's not out of character to the neighborhood, and I don't believe that, taking into account that the applicant has redesigned it in accordance to what the board has requested, it won't be a detriment to any of the nearby properties. In every application, you can, you can, you can think that there might be a possible way that it could be achieved with another method, but in this, in this case, the fact that you want to build that, that building where you want to build it, and if you turned it 90 degrees to conform for the side setback, I don't see any other place that you could put it reasonably.
Before, before I get, this meeting's open to the public, so Josh, have you got anything online? Okay, telephone, telephone number's 872-7011 if anyone wishes to speak for or against this application. And while we're waiting, see if the phone rings, pursuant to section 617.4 of the environmental code, I'd make a motion for a type 2 secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Continue. I'm going to keep going till...
I don't anticipate, I don't, we didn't have any reaction last time you were here.
I'll cease.
Any, any public comment last time you were here as well, so I don't, I don't think we're going to get any neighbors calling in.
I don't think the request is substantial in order to put that, that structure there. I don't see any way, shape, or form you could do it any differently. It doesn't have any adverse physical or environmental impacts to the neighborhood. You can always argue that the, that was self-created, but once again, in order to put that development or building on that property, I don't, I don't see any other way you could do it. It's not an undesirable change, and I don't believe the request is, is significant. So, make a motion. Want to wait for a phone, or do I guess we'll go into the motion? Eric, I'm Rita?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to allow a five-foot side, side setback where 15 feet is required and a 14-foot rear setback where 50 feet is required for the construction of a 26-foot by 34-foot detached two-car garage on a .36 acre parcel having SPL number 078.15-1-33 located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 225-11B5B and 225-11B5C of the code of the town of Webster.
Mr. DiNoto?
Aye.
Mr. Houser?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mrs. Vollo?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye. Okay, you have your variance and a couple of conditions, you need a building permit, obviously, you need a building permit, and also actually, you could actually go to Mauk, this is, this is official, you got the variance, and meaningful construction must begin within one year.
I'd like to add another condition, I'd like to have a stakeout done before the foundation's installed.
Yeah, it would be highly recommended, well, you really have to get that stake because we're talking, you're so close to the lot line, do you have, do you have your property corners pinned?
No.
You should probably get a surveyor before you start construction so that contractor has something to measure off of, because if you're off, you'd be in for another variance and this board, you know, may not, may not be in favor of another variance, so very important, it, you know, costs a few bucks to do it, but it's, it's the right way to do it. And, you know, what this does too is someday when you sell the property, everything is legal, everything's done per code, right? So you're all set.
I actually talked to the surveyor that did St. Rita's, so I'm wondering if he will come over, because he's already familiar with it, if he'll come over and mark ours out.
Your best bet is to use a surveyor that did the original survey, because they already have it on CAD, and they could probably come and, you know, they, they got control and so on and so forth.
I don't think this is Rob's around to have more.
Yeah, it was...
I believe he's retired, I mean, I need to say. But that's, that's not a bad, bad idea, you're dealing with a surveyor that's done the history of all the adjacent properties to do an accurate survey, your property being one of them, you know, that's probably your best bet to do that.
Yeah, because he told me he actually did a real thorough job, he went over to find gravestones and measured from those, because there was no real...
That would be your best bet.
So he would be okay to use?
Yes, absolutely. You can use anyone that's licensed through the state of New York.
Okay.
But that gentleman's already done a lot of homework in that area, so he may be, may cut your cost now, yeah, okay?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Besides, you can have the doctor back as well.
Eric, did I, did I read the address to that motion into the record? Did I read the address?
If not, yeah, to Kathryn, could I have the address?
Mendon, it's for the address for 478 Ridge Road Garage? I don't, I don't think I did. Thank you.
Shall we wait for the applicant?
Right.
Yeah.
Guess that would be important.
Corinne has, Corinne has to do a lot more work this way, has to do a lot more work, you know.
She needs to call up St.
They had the, the last applicant had trouble hearing, the rest, do you hear me all right or not?
No. Sometimes they have trouble hearing you. I can hear, I can hear you better than that.
All right, can you read that into the record, please?
282 Gallant Fox Lane Shed, located at 282 Gallant Fox Lane, applicants Benjamin and Nicole Halick are requesting area variances to allow an eight-foot side setback where 15 feet is required and an eight-foot rear setback where 15 feet is required for the construction of a 16-by-10-foot shed on a .4 acre parcel having SPL number 050.01-7-5 located in an R2 single-family residential district under section 225-48 of the code of the town of Webster.
Okay, if you could state your name and address, please, for the record?
I guess I'm Ben Halick, and my address is 282 Gallant Fox Lane.
You weren't here...
I was here a month ago, yes.
Yeah, and you were asking for five-foot?
I was asking, we were asking for five feet, five feet, and after discussion with my wife, we, and our discussion with, with you, we wanted to compromise and hope, hopefully you guys would be willing to give us eight feet by eight feet. After long deliberation, looking at our lot, 15, I, I know that's the permit and it's could function, but for us as a family, it's not going to function in a way that we would like, and with, with our future, with more kids, we, we need more space.
I, I would caution the board that this is, you know, it's a typical, typical half-acre lot, and once we grant a variance without a specific reason, we kind of open the door to variances throughout that whole neighborhood, because we're kind of setting a standard. We, we've done this before, we're, we have cluster lots, they're smaller lots, but there's a reason for it, because lots are only 60 feet wide or only 140 feet deep or something, so, you know, the question is, do we want to open that door? The only thing I see that may, may influence my decision is that there's green space behind, behind the house, so being a little closer to that line doesn't really impact anybody. I kind of like the 15 feet on the side, so it lines up with the house, but...
I, I thought that was where we left the recommendation as well, if I were in my notes, that we wanted the full side setback because there was, of the spacing of the yards and the fact that this yard didn't have any physical hindrances to moving it in, and it was quite deep, so the shed was well away from the house.
Well, let's, let's pull the board and see...
Correct, the impression I, I'm sorry, the impression I had received was from everybody, I got a first and a second, that you didn't, you still were not going to give me that, so I thought if we brought it another three feet in, that that would be more accepting.
The problem is, is that there's no physical reason, it's just what you want to do. When we go through the standards for the variance, self-created, obviously, it is substantial, it is out of character with the neighborhood, and it is achievable by another method, so right there, you're, you're not meeting the physical standards that we have to enumerate and say, yeah, this fellow's got a problem and we're going to give him a variance to solve that problem. You have a desire, that doesn't give the board anything we can hang our hat on. There's no reason to give you that side setback, there's actually no reason to give you the rear setback, except that you've got the green space behind you, and so there's no detriment to any future property owner.
Does the, does the board take into consideration the neighbors? So a neighbor who, if he's, like, my neighbor said that, he was working on, sending an email saying, "My immediate neighbor does not mind the shed being placed where it is."
That's true, however, the code represents the interests of the town and the neighborhood in general. As Mr. Barone pointed out, if we give you an eight-foot variance for no reason, then everybody can come in and say, well, it was done here, you've established a precedent, so now even though my neighbor's objecting, you've set the precedent, and we're just opening the door to a lot of problems. The code basically embodies the desire of the town for reasonable and orderly development, and you can vary that if it's necessary. In this instance, as we pointed out in the last meeting, there's nothing necessary about this, it's just what you want to do.
Having, having a shed in what looks to be the middle of your lot is not a necessary...
No, the code says that it's not.
Right in the middle of your lot, okay.
It's not in the middle of your lot.
Sir, you exaggerate.
Okay.
When I went and past the lot and the shed, looking at it originally with the five-foot request and then again with the eight-foot request, to me, it's a narrow lot, maybe I'm biased because I live in an area where the lots are required to be wider, but, but having paced it off, it, it's, when, try and get this right, when it is in 15 feet from the, the back line and the side setback, wow, my mouth is just broken today, it, it gives the appearance of, of being in the middle of the yard, even though it is towards the back of the yard, given that it is, I'll call it town parkland, I know we don't have Forever Wild in the town, parkland behind it, and I know in some of the other subdivisions, I think like Coastal View and some of the others in that area, actually within this subdivision, we have allowed the sheds to be closer to the parkland because it's not ever going to impact anybody but the deer and the rabbits. That would, it's, it's, it's a fairly new subdivision, I understand there's not a lot of obstacles there, but, but it is also a subdivision full of small children and I'm sure at some point in time, child, child features as well. I, I know when we looked at both positions, the eight-foot end, and also if we, if we had to move it in, you know, 15 feet to be in line with the house, I guess I'll let the applicant speak to that setback difference. Personally, the, the rear setback, it doesn't impact anything, and I don't think that that would be, at least from my point of view, I don't think that would be an issue, and a precedent would only apply to anyone that would back up to that particular area that is limited to a few homes.
Any thoughts on it?
There's no hardship. I, I would be happier if the side setback was complied with, and at least there's a little give and take, taking, taking place. I, I feel that town always gets slapped with precedent, everybody goes, you established this precedent, you have to permit this. So I'm still on the fence, I, I'm happy, I'd be happier if there was a 15-foot side setback, I guess I could live with the eight-foot rear setback, but there again, I caution the board, there's no hardship.
With regard to precedent, this is a brand-new neighborhood, so is it, you know, in other words, is it, out of character with the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood has not been developed yet, in other words, this is part of it, this is part of it, to your point. So that concerns me, if, I, I agree with Corinne to the degree where the Forever Wild land is, it's easier to give you variance there than it would be on the side. Someone asked me recently, why are the setbacks so big? I said, that's what this town's fathers, the town boards in the past, they wanted Webster to remain a rural-looking town. I, I do work in almost every town in the county, in Ontario County, Webster has the biggest setbacks, except for Mendon. Mendon's five-acre lots... Mendon's five-acre lots have huge setbacks. But the point is, compared to other towns like Webster, we have the biggest front setbacks, the biggest rear setbacks, the biggest side setbacks, because the people that made the zoning laws wanted the town to look spacious and overall.
Yes.
And then the town board even pushed that a little further, maybe ten years ago, when they made, oh, the lot size is bigger. Went from eighteen thousand to twenty-two thousand for R three, you know, and so on, twenty-two to twenty-seven or twenty-eight thousand for R two, and the lot size got bigger. So, the town's fathers and the people that make the laws, and they're always asking for public input, and people don't show up to meetings. And then they pass the zoning law. Well, public input, because nobody says anything. But that's the reason Webster has larger setbacks than most towns. Because they're trying to maintain a spacious rural character in the town. So, people ask us that all the time, but why did they discourage six-foot fences? They don't want the town to have fences, they want open business, you know? That's what the town's framers had in mind when they wrote the zoning law. So, I haven't heard from you, Bob.
I'm actually on the fence on this one because it's a new development and, you know, lot size plays a big part of it. So for a fifteen-foot side setback for a large lot, it's still, the shed is still on the side of the backyard. But for a fifteen-foot side setback for a smaller lot, it does put that shed toward the middle of that lot. Hardship is a problem, and this is part of what we talked about last time. And we're handcuffed to a set of standards that we have to go through. Hardship is one of them. You know, why can't you put the shed where the setbacks for the zone require them to be? Sometimes we ask questions so that the person given the answer will actually give us the information that we need to say, okay, that's the reason that we can grant the variance. In this case, you didn't do that. So, I'm actually, I'm on the fence on it because once we grant the variance for that area, we set a precedent and everybody that comes before the board after that to say, well, you know, you granted this at this address, and we're stuck. You know, we're stuck with that. It may not be a bad thing, but, I mean, I don't know what the future holds on that. So, that's my two cents.
Personally, I like the fifteen-foot side because then it lines up with the side of the house. The rear, I agree with Corinne. I'm not sure we'd be doing the right thing to grant a rear setback variance in a brand-new neighborhood like that, but I have less of a problem with the rear setback backing up to Forever Wild. If we qualify, if we move to give this gentleman a variance, we can qualify that with the fact that it backs up to Forever Wild. So when you have houses back-to-back, you wouldn't be stuck with that.
Should be explained. Your home actually conforms to the side setback, so you've got a fifteen-foot barrier from your property line. So requiring a fifteen-foot side setback for the shed actually puts the shed behind the house.
We could deal with the fifteen-foot side setback.
Okay. All right. This meeting is open to the public. Any wish, anyone wishing to speak for or against this application?
You may have to amend your request on-
Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application can call in or email into the town site. The number is eight seven two seven zero one one.
This is not an entirely new subdivision? And Gallant Fox has been continued, the street has continued through the subdivision probably ten years or so. We have had other applicants, and I know we don't want to set precedent or use anything as precedent, but we have in that area done the same thing with the rear setback for sheds. Along Nature Trail, which is one of the spurs off of here, and another couple of houses on Gallant Fox, I believe, because there has been the wooded area behind them and it hasn't impacted anybody. And they're really only point four acre lots. They're, you know, they're still less than half an acre, they're certainly not large, they're certainly not postage-sized patio home lots, but, you know, when you stand in the middle of that backyard, it's not a giant backyard. Seventy feet looks much bigger when you're not standing in it.
I remember a house variance there recently, well, within the past couple of years-
Yeah.
Closer to the rear line because it was very, very shallow lot. I don't remember the shed, but you've been on this board longer than I have. I don't believe anyone's going to call in. Pursuant to six seventeen point five, the environmental court will make a motion for type two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think what I've heard from the applicant, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you would agree to a fifteen-foot side complying the side, but you're still looking for an eight-foot rear setback?
Yes.
I'm really conflicted on this because Ann Riley made a heck of an impression on me when she says, tell me why you can't comply. For some reason, that bit just stuck in my head. And if we didn't ask the question, she would. Tell me why you can't comply.
Those are state standards that have to be met. In order for the board to be equal to everyone, you have to follow those standards.
The applicant's going to amend and withdraw one of the variances?
Yes.
So he's going to adhere to the fifteen-foot side setback?
Correct.
Correct.
There's really no impact. If we do the fifteen-foot side, the eight-foot rear setback, there's no impact on a neighbor. That's really a lot of what we do, is how does it affect the neighborhood?
It's not visible from the road at that point in time.
Right.
It's hidden behind the house profile.
Well, let me run through the standards and then we'll see if we'll make a motion on this. It's not out of character with the neighborhood. As I said before, and Corinne said as well, we have given a few rear setback variances in that neighborhood already. The side setback to me was more important because that's what you see from the street. The rear setback is less of an issue. There is no detriment created nearby properties. You could achieve the benefit of achieving by any other method. What I'm doing is I'm reading through the standards here and then just commenting on that. It is achieved by another method, by moving the shed forward. The request is not substantial. It's about a fifty percent variance, eight feet as opposed to fifteen feet, so it's somewhat substantial. There are no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or neighborhood. You know, I didn't notice, is there easement along the rear line that you have to stay out of?
On the rear line, no. On the sides, there are.
On the sides, okay. So there is no adverse physical or environmental impact. Difficulty is self-created. It's not an undesirable change, really. There's really not much there, the neighbors are not opposed to it, and it's somewhat significant. So we're about fifty-fifty on the standards, as Eric actually pointed out earlier. So, I guess what we'll do, if you want to go, no variance on the side and eight-foot on the rear?
Yes.
What I'll do is, any other discussion before I move forward? Okay. Let me make a motion and then we'll see how the board feels about it. Okay, fair enough.
Sure.
Okay. I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to allow a fifth, excuse me, an eight-foot rear setback where fifteen feet is required for construction of a sixteen-by-ten-foot shed on a point four acre parcel having SPL number zero five zero point zero one dash seven dash five located in an R two single-family district under section two twenty-five dash forty-eight of the code of the town of Webster.
Second.
We have a second.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Vollo?
Aye.
Mr. Denoto?
Aye.
Mr. Schneider?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Okay. You've got your variance. Just a couple of conditions. You need to get a building permit. And I'm going to reiterate what Mr. Hauser said in the last application as well. Get a survey. You may have your corners pinned already because it's a brand-new house, but it's very important to make sure you're at least eight feet off that rear line, all right? So you need a building permit, meaningful construction within one year, all right? Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Shanley Drive Fence, Gazeebo and Hot Tub located at seven twenty-six Shanley Drive, applicant Melissa and Theodore Finglad are requesting area variances to allow: A) The installation of a six-foot high fence on the lot line where a ten-foot setback is required by the town code section two two five dash seventy-seven C. B) The installation of a six-foot high fence located in the front yard in parentheses, corner lot, which is not permitted pursuant to Webster Town Code section two two five dash seventy-seven B and two two five dash seventy-seven C. C) The legalization of an existing ten-foot by twelve-foot gazebo in the front yard which is not permitted pursuant to Webster Town Code section two two five dash thirty-six A sub one and two two five dash thirty-six A sub two. D) The legalization of an existing hot tub located within the footprint of a covered porch which is less than fifteen feet from the side property line pursuant to Webster Town Code section two two five dash eleven B sub five sub B on a point four six acre parcel having SPL number zero six four point two zero dash one dash four one located in an R three single-family residential district.
All right, if you could state your name and address, please, and tell us about your project.
My name is Melissa Finglad and it's seven twenty-six Shanley Drive. And mainly, it's the fence for the dog we have. We have the corner lot. We're following setbacks for all sides except for the back, which is right along the property line, which I also submitted a letter from our neighbor on that side stating that she does not mind the six-foot fence. I don't know if that helps at all. As the gazebo, I didn't know that that was not allowed and it's on our patio. It is removable, but it's not something we take down every year. And as well as the hot tub, I didn't know either. And it's under our covered patio area.
Could you, just for my benefit, could you pull the mic a little closer so I can hear you better, please? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Weren't you here a year ago or two years ago?
I was here and we had flooding problems in our basement, so we had to use the funds to fix that stuff inside the house before we could do the stuff outside.
I don't know if the board remembers. I think we did approve a fence, but we, I don't know if it was six-foot, but I think it was forty-foot deck on the front setback. I think that's what we approved before. I'm not positive.
I have a copy of the previous resolution? We did. It was, we had approved a five-foot fence on the lot line at forty feet, a forty-foot front setback located in the front yard and a one-point-five-foot side setback.
But it was a four-foot fence, correct?
Yes, five-foot fence on the lot line and also forty feet from, it came out from the house, it was forty feet from the front setback.
Because of being a core lot, they allowed the forty-foot, the front setback anyways, okay.
I had something else. It's gone. But, so, are you looking for the same, the same fence dimension as previously or-
The dimensions around, yeah, I would try, I would really love to do the six-foot. I have a big dog, he jumps, he can jump. He's vertical, just standing here, he can jump at least just this high, just four feet at least, just vertically. If he's running and jumping, who knows how high he could go.
Now, she's showing a sixteen feet from the house, and the house is fifty-one feet from the street, so it's less than forty.
Yeah, thirty-five point four.
What is it?
Thirty-five point four.
Thirty-five point four, okay. So, the first question is, would you go to forty feet instead of thirty-five point four?
Yes, I would do the, it's eleven point four from the corner of the house. The reason I put it in like that is because the sections of the fence, the way they measure, it's just simpler to buy the sections and just go around-
That's the same discussion we had last time, as a matter of fact.
Yes, that's why I said, because I wanted to do the six, I think it's like six by eight are the sections of the fence.
I'll also add that when I went out there to do the side, is it-
We kind of staked out what was originally approved and it would interfere with two to three existing trees that are on the property. So, we measured to avoid the removal of trees and it just so happened that it coincided with the sixteen feet.
That was the question that I did, because when I was at the property again this week, of course, without a tape measure, there were a couple of good-sized trees that looked like they could be right where the fence posts would end up. So thank you, Josh, that makes sense then.
So let me, to kind of summarize, the biggest difference here is the height of the fence.
Yeah, yes, the height is the six-foot and all the other rules are being followed except for the property line. All the setbacks are on the side going from the house and on the side lot. They're all within the rules except for the property line. And that house was actually just built a few years ago, too, as well. So it's just hard, because I didn't know all this when I bought the house.
It's very, yeah, very strange the way the house is so close to the property line.
And when, like, if my dog's out there on his runner and, like, the kids go by on their bikes, he just, he goes crazy, like, and I'm afraid he's going to, like, break his runner or something. And he's a big dog, he's like a hundred and ten-pound shepherd, he's huge. So I just want to keep him contained.
We did receive a letter from Joyce Lotempio.
That's the side on the property line.
Yes, she lives at one eighty-four Rosinview, next door to Melissa and Ted Finglad. I have no obje, I'm reading her words. I have no objective at all for them to construct a six-foot fence on the property line. They have a large dog, they need a nice enclosure with a fence. They own a corner lot, so I can appreciate why they need privacy. Joyce Lotempio. So we'll make that part of the record. Do we have any other input from any other neighbors, Josh?
No.
No, okay. This meeting's open to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application can call in. We're traditionally opposed to six-foot fences. Now, this dog could hop over a five-foot fence.
If he got a running start, yes, I think he could. He's literally, his vertical, he gets on the back of my pickup truck and it's this high. And he could just, from the ground, jump straight up and land right in the back of the truck. And it's about another foot, he would probably get a running start and just, he escapes out of our windows in our house.
Yeah, we've actually, Karen and I years ago looked at a house with a similar rear setback on the corner of Adams and Lake. And, you know, this was just done back then on corner lots for whatever the rationale was. And it's probably the only instance where I'd come out in favor of a six-foot fence on the lot- instance where I'd come out in favor of a six-foot fence on the lot line, because you don't have anywhere else to put it, simply because the house is, what is it, uh, six tenths of a foot from you.
Well, the lot's only a hundred-and-eleven feet deep.
Yeah.
It's only a hundred-and-eleven feet deep.
Well, and, well, we reviewed this one the last time, um, because the fence, I believe the fence was coming out, there was a, like, a side door where the, the hot tub area is, so the fence was coming out from the corner of the house essentially. Um, so it, there really, it made no sense to put it anyplace other than the lot line, just based on the location of, of where the house was. Um, and there is no backyard to this house, there's a side yard to the north, um, where there's a row of trees, and it's, it's a fairly narrow, but there's no doors to the house on that side to get into a fenced-in area. Um, and then it's essentially all front yard, because it's considered front yard and road frontage.
I believe this was a double lot years ago, and this was the only, the house, the corner house had a double, double lot. And it was split permitting.
Who approved that split?
The existing location. And, uh, where the house located in relationship to the rear property line being the eastern property line.
Yeah, because I remember we had that conversation, and the house was there when the split was made, it just.
Town permitted it.
Right up the.
Do they have a practical difficulty?
Yeah, we're, we're kinda stuck with whatever, whatever, the subdivision was done, I think we're stuck with that, yeah. It, it, I, I agree with Karen in this, uh, the rear wall of the house is much more of, you know, the facade of that is much more than the fence. In other, in other words, the fence is less than the rear wall of the house, which is right along the lot line. So the fence is actually, you know, really less of an impact than the house itself that, that close to the lot line. The gazebo, let's talk about the gazebo. That's kinda tucked in. It's an L-shaped house and it's tucked into the L, so even though it's the front yard, it's a corner lot, so there, there's no place else to put it. It's got two front yards and literally no backyard in this house. There's no backyard. Because the house backs right up the line.
Could you attach that gazebo to the house?
No, it's not attached, it actually took me about two weeks, I put that up, I did that myself, I built it all by myself. I used my husband just for muscle here and there, but I put that together. And it's not attached to the house, though, it's not. But it's my, my she-shed area.
The reason I say that, if it was attached to the house, it could become part of the house in no variance. I, I mean, the variance will stay on this property forever and ever and ever. And there again, I'm trying to lessen a number of variances on this property.
Can we, uh, can we make this map part of the record, so the gazebo can't move? In other words, say somebody else buys the house and they wanna put the gazebo in the front yard, because, so, what we would do is make this map part of the record, and the gazebo has to stay in the location approved. This way, people can't put it right out in front of the, you know, in front of the fence.
The problem is, a lot of the records are only good for five years, I believe, right Catherine?
I can attach it.
Attach it, I would rather have it attached to the house.
Oh, yeah.
I can do a lot of stuff.
If you can, that would make it go away.
Yeah, I don't even know, I, I didn't look at it closely enough to see if that's practical, you know, to see if that's something that's easily done.
I, I know it's movable now. If you decided to go with something a little more permanent, that's where it would go. And that's, that's why I'm making that suggestion.
To Don's point, have you looked at attaching it to the house, attaching the roof to the house or not?
I can figure away the posts and then the way the roof is with the roof of the house, there is a way to make that work, to attach it actually to the house, yes.
Because the gazebo acts as a porch, covered porch, as we'd say, you know, so the proximity to the house is really essential to the function of the gazebo, really. Okay. Now, we're also talking about a hot tub.
Now that's.
I thought that was.
Wasn't that there before?
Yes, it was there, it was, it was, um, supposed to be inspected because of electrical, but it's actually just a regular, you can plug it into a regular outlet, and we removed the light above it, so we complied with that restriction.
But it's in that little.
It's in the alcove, yes.
Okay.
And it has, like, the breaker on the plug itself, so it'll flip if something happens, but it just plugs into a regular outlet, it's not any special electrical.
Okay, but Josh, it just, it needs a setback variance because of the location of the house being so close, okay?
It's a function of that, no, no rear setback, it's.
Okay, because it is, it's contained within the outline of the house, but.
And the fence would also cover that once that's.
Well, wasn't that granted before, two years ago?
It's not, the hot tub isn't in the variance, but I remember seeing the hot tub.
I know.
I just figured I'd get it all done at once.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. How, how, Don, how would you feel if we made, if we stated the gazebo had to stay within the offense area? To give it, like, to your point, what happens ten years from now, they sell the house and people put a gazebo in the front yard?
I would rather.
I'm, I'm just looking for a way to.
I would rather see it attached to the house.
You, you want railings or a lockway?
Yeah, if you can attach it to the house. It becomes a porch and then.
Well, then it can't stray away from the house, if it's attached to the house, it's attached to the house.
And you'd have to completely disassemble it to remove it, it's very heavy, so you can't really just move it.
Well, I'll tell you what, um, it's something, we could, we could move on the other items on the, that you're asking for, for the variance, and maybe go back and study that gazebo to see if there's a way to tie it to the house somehow. And, uh, you know, to Mr. Hauser's point, then, and, you know, twenty years from now or ten years from now, somebody can't just put a gazebo in the front yard, because we said you could put a gazebo in the front yard, or.
Okay, so I have another question, what if I took, like, there's like this much space in between the, the posts in the house? If I, like, if I put something there and, like, screwed it into the house, would that be?
Any way you could attach it, because that'll keep it from straying in the future, right? Okay, yeah, that, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, as long as it's physically attached by bolts or whatever, however.
The only question, so you, you, you physically put the gazebo structure together, did you get a permit for that?
No, I didn't know I had to.
Okay, do you have a permit for the hot tub, was that there?
No, that's, that's why I did that with this, too, because I didn't know I had to have, we had a hot tub inside the pool area before, but this one wouldn't fit inside, so we put it in the covered.
Okay.
So, I actually gotta plead the.
You think it was a natural.
The way she just described it, if it plugs into a regular GFI receptacle, is that considered a permanent structure?
I can read your mind, yeah, it's, it.
It is?
I think, I think if we, if we move on this, we're gonna definitely insist on, on building permits for everything, including the hot tub.
A permit, yes, but, but if she, I mean, if, if, if they plug it in or, and they drain it and they can roll it away, I, I've seen, I've seen what she's describing, and I've seen a regular install with a fifty-amp two-pole circuit breaker, and there, that's not going anywhere, so. I've seen where you can, you can plug them in, unplug them.
Is it a flammable hot tub?
No, it's actually a full-size, big acrylic with the surround.
You just, you plug it in?
Yes.
Depends on the size of the pump and everything, I mean, you could have the GFIC built into the outlet, and it just plugs in as long as it's, you know.
Usually, usually ones that plug it right in, they're, the pump and the heater, uh, it's usually so small that they're, that's usually portable, that's why I'm asking.
No, this one is.
Well, what we'll do, let's, let's stick to the variance issues, and then we're gonna use required building permit, which will require electrical inspection, and everything will be done a, as it should be. Um, I, I, I think the biggest issue for me is the six-foot fence. And being in the front yard, the lot is so tight, that a lot of these variances she's asking for are almost, they're just necessary for that house to even exist, you know, uh, just the way it's right up against the lot line. So, I guess, I don't know, what, what, what do you all think about the six-foot height on that fence? Because we did approve a five-foot fence in the past.
I'm, I'm actually, so, one of the, one of the parameters that we have to go through is finding the fact is, is, is there another way you can achieve it? And I'm going through dog training right now, and I just bought a, a forty-dollar shock collar. Um, man, if you, if you think that the dog could possibly breach the enclosure, I mean, there's, that's another way to go. You put that shock collar, it's gotta beep, it's gotta vibrate, and if that doesn't work, you know, you give it a shock, and I guarantee you won't jump that fence.
We actually had to do that, um.
I hate to do it.
Well, I, I had a jumper.
I haven't got to the beep and the, and the vibration, but I haven't actually had the shock.
Yeah, no, I, I had a pound dog that would jump the fence like it wasn't there. So we had a fence, and then we had invisible fence within the fence to contain bear, and he only jumped it once, and then.
So that, these are the things that we have to ask ourselves before we can rent variants, is, is, is it achievable by another method? Especially, as long as I've been on the board, I've only seen a six-foot, uh, this lot is unique, I, I, granted, but we've, I've only, I think we've only granted a six-foot fence on a property line twice.
Well, that's my biggest problem with three, with all, all the variances she's asking for, that's my biggest problem.
But this, this, because of the circumstances that they subdivided and, and they, this was a, a bigger lot, and they, they made it a smaller lot, uh, and the house was already there, um, there are, there are special circumstances with this lot that, that you don't normally see. Yeah, and, and to, to your point, I mean, dogs are unfortunately more transient than the fences, but the privacy of this because of how the property was subdivided, and the fact that the house backs right up to, within a half a foot of the lot line, almost necessitates, just for a privacy point of view, that we've, that the six-foot fence has to be there. And in the two instances I can recall where we put a six-foot fence on the lot line, it was because of privacy issues, um, that couldn't be achieved by any other way, because there were swimming pools in the way, and if we tried to move the fence in, you know, that, that was one on Clem Road, then the other one was over in the, uh, off of the wet road, and the lot was so small that, plus the privacy issues, you couldn't get a ten-foot off the lot line. So, um, in this instance, the lot is not only small, it's bizarre. And so, uh, just from the privacy point of view, the six-foot fence falls into the category where, I looked at this and I said, gee, this is one of the few instances where I'm not going to be objecting to a six-foot fence on the lot line.
Yeah, the lot does dictate extenuating circumstances with respect to the fence.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we have, it sounds like the six-foot fence is gaining favor with the board. The gazebo, I, I agree with that, if they could have fastened it to the house in some fashion, then it becomes, that, that variance goes away. The hot tub is not an issue, because it's under a roof in an alcove adjacent to the existing home. Um, what am I missing? That's about it, six-foot fence in the front, in the front yard.
She was.
We, we can't, we can't not put a fence in the front yard, they're all front yards, okay.
But there, so they, are you gonna amend the, uh, front setback for the six-foot, for the fence to forty feet, instead of thirty-four, thirty-five point four?
Yes, I can do the eleven point four out if necessary.
Except that I think when Josh measured it, the forty feet didn't work because of the position of the trees.
There's some good-sized trees there that, that would have to be taken down to put the fence where we would like to sit. When it turns, the trees, and actually the trees provide a nice screening, it's privacy that are much more attractive than a fence, so I'd hate to see it, see the trees go.
Yeah, okay.
You saw it yourself, yeah.
Yeah, I did, the trees are, um, on the eastern property line, close to the front part, just within what's indicated on the map.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Alright, um, I don't, I don't think anyone's gonna call in. Pursuant to, uh, six seventeen point five, the environmental court will make a motion for a type-two secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, somebody let go through the standards?
Um, thought out of character with the neighborhood, uh, given that, uh, we've got the, um, the property line right up against the back of the house, that in and of itself is out of character with just about every neighborhood, so this is an unfortunate necessity to that. Uh, no detriment to other properties, uh, as Ms. Vollo pointed out, the, um, house itself is a larger physical object than the fence would be, or, um, or, or the hot tub, well, the hot tub won't even be visible at that point. Um, not extensive or substantial, the fence itself is simply multiples of the eight-foot, uh, standard, and that avoids taking down the trees, um, it, uh, so it's not projecting into the front yard any further than is necessary, um, and the rear yard, it is substantial, but again, that's dictated by the lot compared to the house. No adverse physical or environmental impact, um, not achievable by any other method, simply because of the location of the house. This one actually is not self-created, the town created this one back when they allowed the property to be subdivided with the, uh, with a setback to the house's six-tenths of a foot. And, uh, it's not an undesirable change, so that the property owner can have some privacy, even with the setbacks the way they are, and, um, so it, in fact, probably create a better thing for the neighborhood simply because of the, uh, privacy issues between the two houses.
Eric, excuse me, what type of fence is it going to be?
We were thinking vinyl, but it damages easily with the dog and his nails, so we're probably gonna just do the wood fence, the stockade wood, six-by-eight sections.
Oh, uh, complication, uh, maintenance, sorry, maintenance. You'd need a licensing agreement for your neighbor to be able to maintain the, uh, fence on that side.
True.
It's the, the maintenance of that whole side of the house is.
That's right.
You better do it for your neighbors.
We can do vinyl.
Oh, there again, I'm gonna try to, I'm, I'm just trying to cross the Ts and dot the Is.
Yeah.
I see, uh, we, I mean, we just dealt with the previous applications, corners establishing precedent and, uh, wanting to have some sort of room to do maintenance.
So, but a vinyl fence is essentially maintenance-free?
She already got it when she, when they approved it.
I don't know that.
Do you have any, any, uh, note or record to say that you can be on the, on the west property in order to maintain the backside of your house?
Yeah, yeah, yes, that would still be, um.
So do you have a document that says that?
Not from the neighbor?
Yes.
No, she's the one that wrote the letter, though.
Did you, you didn't get anything when you, when you bought the house?
No.
Might have been point of sales.
We bought it from Flippers, so we didn't get really anything.
Um, just for the record, that's the east side line, not the west.
Yeah. The application's only with respect to, or, in combination of A and B, C and D is gonna be withdrawn?
Oh, let's see, yes, and.
C, yes.
C is being withdrawn, D?
D, D, we're gonna put a condition on it, that's all, because.
So the application was with respect to A and B, correct?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, because that hot tub winds up underneath the house, which is within the envelope, and it is less than, well, actually, we have to, we have to actually move on D also because it's less than fifteen feet from the line. Okay. Do you wanna make a motion, Eric?
Sure. So, I'm sorry, before we do that, so we're including D in this applica, in this motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Anything you'd add to the record on D or your covenants covering?
Well, what I'd like to do is make part of the motion that they have to get a building permit, acquire a building permit for legalization of that tub, because to Bob's point, it may not be safe, as is. So, when you get a building permit, that triggers the electrical inspection.
Right.
So, that it will be safe, right?
Okay.
Is that what you had in mind?
Yes.
So, that said, I'll make a motion to grant three variances to Melissa and Theodore Fingland at seven twenty-six Shanley Drive. The first, to allow the installation of a six-foot high fence on the lot line where a ten-foot setback is required by Town Code Section 225, subsection seventy-seven, subsection C. The installation of a six-foot high fence located in the front yard of a corner lot, which is not permitted pursuant to the Webster Town Code Section 225-77 subsection B and 225-77 subsection C. And the legalization of an existing hot tub located within the footprint of a covered porch, which is less than fifteen feet from the side property line pursuant to Webster Town Code Section 225-11 subsection B sub-five sub-B on a point-four-six acre parcel having SBL location number zero-six-four dash twenty, or point-twenty dash one dash forty-one located in an R-three single-family residential district subject to the conditions that a building permit be obtained for the hot tub, that the fence be of a low-maintenance type, and that a covenant be established between the property at ten eighty-four Horizon View Drive and the property at seven twenty-six Shanley Drive, that maintenance on the house and the fence can be achieved by trespass onto ten eighty-four Horizon View Drive.
Do we have the right to do that? That's maybe the bounds of our authority, pushing it, yeah.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Well, generally, does the board, I recognize that a vinyl fence, at least conceptually, does away with the maintenance issue, which is really all we're dealing with tonight. The circumstances with respect to the gazebo and the hot tub, is that also going to require...
Not really, they could maintain that without going on the neighbor's property. But they still have to maintain the house, whether or without, whether or without this variance, they still have to maintain their house.
Yeah, so, historically, have you required a maintenance-free or a particular type of fencing in this circumstance?
On the Clem Road application, I believe we did. And I think, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that in just about the few instances where we have, the maintenance has always come into play and we've always insisted on a maintenance-free fence.
Well, I think a couple of situations, we gave, an option was provided, maintenance-free funds or a license agreement from a neighbor, allowing the neighbor to be able to maintain their fence, which works out to their advantage because now they're looking at nice funds all the time.
It's actually a good way of looking at it, so rather than put the burden to acquire it, the applicant grants the right to the neighbor.
Right.
Okay. So, I'll amend the motion to, instead of requiring a covenant between the two, to grant the right to your neighbor at ten eighty-four Horizon View Drive to allow them to maintain the fence as they see fit.
Okay.
Now, one thing I'd like to add to that motion is that that fence, the six-foot fence in the front yard, has a thirty-five-foot front setback, because there's nowhere, no mention of that dimension. All it says is we're allowing a six-foot fence in the front yard, and that means you can put it anywhere, so...
So, because I consider the side of it, the Horizon View side, so that's forty feet, right?
Well, we agreed to go thirty-five because you had trees in the way, so we're letting you get closer to the road than the forty feet.
Okay, because I wasn't sure if you were speaking of the actual front that I consider of the Shanley side, but that would be way far back anyway, I just wasn't sure if you were...
The other thing, we're gonna use Don's, Don's idea again. Your lot line is not the gutter of the street, so you have to get a surveyor in there to locate that fence properly, okay? Your lot line is actually about seventeen and a half feet from the gutter approximately, but you should get a surveyor in there to locate that fence so you don't go outside of the variance that we granted you tonight, all right?
Okay.
Okay?
And that should be per this map, because if we're granting you thirty-five-foot front setback, that could, that could go all the way around to the front of the house to Shanley, the way the motion was made, so it should be as presented.
Thirty-five feet by?
Yes.
Thirty-five by?
Well, do you condition it to come off of that south...
Southeast corner?
East corner of the, the southeast corner of the house closest to Horizon View.
Okay, so no closer to Shanley than the southeast corner of the house?
Very good.
Yes.
That's a good way to say it.
And extending sixteen feet from the corner of the house would secure the fifteen, or the thirty-five feet?
When we put our minds together, we do pretty good.
That's why we're a team.
Okay, all right.
Does that have any second?
We have a motion made, but no second.
Second. Everybody's good with the amendment, right?
I think we're done.
Okay.
We're done reflecting the motion.
Good. Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. DiNoto?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye. Couple of conditions, building permit for the fence, for the, you know, of course, it was part of the motion for the hot tub. You have to fasten that gazebo to the house somehow, just put boards to it and connect it and make it look nice and so on.
Did we formally, did the applicant formally withdraw that?
Now, I don't know if formal it was. Yeah, well, yeah, I guess you should ask to formally withdraw the, a request for a variance for gazebo in the front yard. You have to say it, I can't say it.
I just request to withdraw for the variance for the gazebo.
Yes, okay, okay. The applicant has asked to withdraw that, so that's, that's off the, off the record, okay. Did I forget anything? I think I got it uncovered.
Were the permits listed as required for the fence, for the hot tub? Was it also for the gazebo?
Yes.
Yeah.
This was, this took a while, so did you give an opportunity for the public? I don't know where you had...
Yeah, I did. Nobody called. We had a lot of...
Very good, all right, we're all set.
Okay, congratulations, you have got three locks.
So, permit for everything.
Except C.
Except C, just the three variances.
You still need to permit for the gazebo, though.
So, I just have to redo for that one?
Yeah, well...
After I attach it?
Is there, is there a mechanism where we can convey to the building department that the gazebo has to be connected?
There's a mechanism right there at the end.
There's a mechanism right there, oh, yeah, you got it.
Mr. Barone, looking at that, I mean, the fourteen-foot setback, fifteen-foot setbacks required. I mean, even if it was, even if it was an addition, they would require a variance because they do not comply with the fourteen.
Yep.
So, to play it safe, let's permit the gazebo at the fourteen-foot setback attached to the house.
What he's saying is he still needs a variance for that.
So, should we do a second?
But it wasn't advertised for that. Not, I don't know if that's a technicality that'll burn us, or, I don't know.
It was advertised to be in the front yard.
We just had the front yard.
Existing gazebo, so...
Right.
It was advertised that way, that's the way it turned.
Now, whether or not someone would make an issue of that in the future because it's so far away from the line compared to the house, I don't know.
Well, and is that the workaround, is if it's attached to the house? The house is approved at, I think it's a foot and a half or a half a foot from the lot line now? And the gazebo is well within...
And that's what I'm saying, let's play it safe. I mean, we're speaking fifteen feet is required considering that as a side setback. We're granting it a variance for one foot?
So, should we just do a variance anyway?
Did we give them a variance for the location of the house at the last? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, we did.
Correct, you keep phenomenal records.
No, Josh, this is all Josh. We did give a variance for...
That was me.
You know, I guess Mr. had to, so if you could get me a copy of it, because I could not remember what we did.
So, my point is if we gave them that variance for that house being proximally that close to the line and they're attached to gazebo to it, I understand what you're saying. It's not a new structure, it's been there, but I, I think if someone looks at it in the future, they'll...
That's correct.
It'll be covered.
Yes.
All right, okay, you go ahead.
The gazebo is off the lot line, it's like way in, it's not...
Well, it's the same, technically, that should be fifteen feet from the line too, but it's, when you attach it to the house, it becomes part of the house.
It's part of the house.
I'll catch it, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Don. Have a good night. All right, we're on number three. Anybody want to sign off for coffee? Anybody need a break?
No, I'm good.
We'll wait a little, wait a little longer, we'll do a couple more of them.
Because we're gonna be done with this.
Granted.
All right, if you could state your name and address and tell us about your project?
Oh, wait, I have to read it in?
Read it, I'm sorry.
All right. Five hundred Lakeview Terrace Deck, located at five hundred Lakeview Terrace. Applicant Mark Hunt is requesting area variances to allow a fifty-three-foot front setback where seventy-five feet is required and a sixteen-point-five-foot side setback where twenty feet is required, associated with the construction of an eleven-by-twelve-foot wooden deck on a point-two-five acre parcel having SBL number zero-four-eight point-one-nine dash two dash four-two, located in an R-one single-family residential district under Section 225-9B sub-five sub-A and Section 225-9B sub-five sub-B sub-one of the code of the town of Webster.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi, so I am Mark Hunt, and I live at five hundred Lakeview Terrace, where I want to erect a eleven-foot by twelve-foot deck right next to the house.
And the only reason you're here is because the house is too close to the front line and the deck, and the deck is also closer to the front line than R-one zoning allows, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, the deck is actually in the front setback?
In the front setback, yes, it's the whole house.
But the house is what, sixty, seventy years old, probably?
Nineteen thirties, so...
It's been there a long time.
Ninety years old.
Before the R-one zoning was there, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I looked at this and it's, house is only twenty feet, or nineteen feet from the street.
Right.
And the gentleman wants to put a deck on the back of his house?
Yes.
No side setback required, just, just the front.
Well, the side setback, I do want to put a little cantilever bump out on the side for a grill. Right, so while I was coming, I said, well, I'll go to the eighteen feet rather than the twenty feet.
Okay, I do see the side setback, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The lot is seventy feet wide.
Yeah, so it's about as narrow as they get.
It's, it's a typical situation where R-one zoning was laid over existing small lot, a small lot development, and now it's almost impossible to do anything. We saw that on the sandbar, every house on the sandbar needed variances.
Oh, yeah.
Let me, let me open this up to the public early, give people an opportunity. I don't think we'll get any calls, but if this, anybody who wants to speak for or against this application, our number is eight-seven-two-seven-zero-one-one. We'll bring the discussion here. This one looks pretty straightforward to me, but I don't know how, how you see it. The side setback, it's an R-one lot, and I visited the site. It's not a large deck he wants to build.
No.
Eleven by twelve, it's minimal, minimal.
And it's within the, if I, if I draw the house into a box, it's within the perimeter of the house? And there's no other place to put the deck, so...
Yeah, the location is, is just where the deck ought to go on that house, no question.
We've had a few of these where the whole house is in the front setback, so...
Yeah, the whole house is the front setback, that's correct, yeah. That's, that's a cute little neighborhood there, really, nice, nice little houses. Okay, pursuant to six seventeen point five, the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker?
Second.
Not one, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't think anyone's gonna call in on this, it's such a minimal variance as it's actually for, really, on the side. So, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Josh, we didn't have anything, right? You didn't have anything written?
Okay.
Okay. As I said, that, that neighborhood is smaller homes, smaller lots, they're closer to the road, small front setbacks, it's just a very quaint little community. So, what the gentleman's asking for is not out of character with the neighborhood at all. There's no detriment created to nearby properties, still maintaining the sixteen-point-five-foot side setback. Benefit really is not achievable by any other method, it's a minimal deck, eleven by twelve, so he's not asking for much. It's not substantial, there's no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or neighborhood. Difficulty is not self-created, the house was built nineteen thirties, you said?
Long before I was born.
Yeah?
Not that long.
Very well maintained too, I might add, beautiful.
Thank you.
Not an undesirable change, and the request is not significant. Anybody have anything to add?
Nothing.
Pretty straightforward.
Straightforward.
How old is your shed in the backyard?
It was there when I moved in fifteen years ago, so I don't know. I think it was there when my neighbors moved in twenty-eight years ago, so I don't know.
Another shed variance? I see, I see what you're looking at, yeah.
I'd generally like to clean up a parcel.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my preference, unless the board would like making a condition that upon reconstructing that shed, it shall comply to the ordinance.
If it's reconstructed.
If it's reconstructed.
Yeah. Yeah, either that or you have to come in for a variance again, okay. All right, I'll make a motion. Let's see, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to five hundred Lakeview Terrace, requesting area variance to allow fifty-three-foot front setback where seventy-five is required for a deck and sixteen-point-five-foot side setback where twenty feet is required on a point-two-five acre parcel have an SBL number zero-four-eight point-one-nine dash two dash four-two located in an R-one single-family residential district under Section 225-9B sub-five sub-A. and two twenty-five dash nine sub B sub five sub B sub one of the code of the town of Webster with the condition that if that shed is ever reconstructed, it complies to the zoning ordinance or it would require a variance.
Okay.
That acceptable? Yeah, which had mine done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Barun?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Haza?
Aye.
Mrs. Svollo?
Aye.
Mr. Denoto?
Aye.
Okay, you have your variance.
Alright.
Of course, you need a building permit and a one-year, you begin meeting for construction, you'll probably be able to tomorrow put in the duck up, right?
Right, absolutely.
Congratulations.
Alright, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Do you want me to read it in low?
Yeah, why not?
Five ninety-four Adams Road Shed located at five ninety-four Adams Road. Applicant Carl Langham is requesting area variances to allow a three point five rear setback, three point five foot rear setback where fifteen feet is required and a four point five foot side setback where fifteen feet is required associated with the expansion of an existing utility shed on a point three three acre parcel having SBL number zero six three point one one dash four dash six five located in an R-three single-family residential district under section two two five dash four eight of the code of the town of Webster.
Hi, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Carl Langham, five ninety-four Adams Road.
Okay, and tell us about your project.
Uh, we have an existing shed in the backyard that's already within the not variance area that we'd like to extend to make a bigger shed.
Now, it looks like you already built it.
Uh, well, we, I started it the weekend we had off in Memorial Day and I thought it was gonna be a regular shed permit where they just come and inspect it at the end. So I did stop building it once I talked to Josh and realized we had to do both the variance. It, it is all unassembleable at the moment, it is all just screwed together, I haven't, nothing's final yet, but I, I did start it that weekend, yes.
If you recall, we, we gave gentlemen across the street several variances for a duck in front of his house and setbacks and-
A fence and I think there was a shed in there.
Yeah. Once again, we have a, a building lot that's a corner lot, another corner lot, ninety feet by a hundred and sixty feet with virtually no backyards, it looks like about a ten-foot backyard in this house.
Yeah, the backyard's essentially the side of the house.
Yeah. So it really doesn't leave him a lot of room for a shed. I believe it was a one-car garage too, wasn't it?
Right.
So he needs some room for stuff. You got some kids, I saw.
Could you, we have a son and a couple dogs.
You got bikes, you got, yeah.
Lots of yard stuff.
All those things that kids need.
Now, I'm assuming that the original shed was there when you purchased the property?
It was, it, and the drawing we sent was the surveying.
Alright, this meeting's open to the public, if anybody wishes to speak for or against this application, please call in, eight seven two seven zero one one. Yeah, actually, when I drove down there and I saw the house across the street to refresh my memory because I think we had to give him three or four variances across the street, again, cause his lot is a mirror image of the one across the street, it's very, very narrow, it's a corner lot.
Now, was there a variance for the existing shed? Do we know? Was the, the shed that's existing, was there a variance for that location or did the previous owner sell it without cleaning it up?
Yeah, I don't know if Josh would have that information or not.
Yeah, we weren't able to find a previous variance on file.
Couldn't find a permit on file, so probably not. Was that on the lot when you purchased it?
It was. That was twenty seventeen.
When you purchased it, yeah.
Yeah, June.
Okay. Okay, well, pursuant to NYCR six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I don't think we're gonna get any calls, and so I'll, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the board.
I can run through the standards if you'd like. The, um, the request is not out of character with at least that part of the neighborhood and probably more of the neighborhood itself. Um, we did have very similar applications on the mirror image house across the street that's also a corner lot. And because the lots in that section of town are significantly smaller than most, I know there's been several shed variances for setbacks just because the backyards are not terribly deep. There is not a detriment that will be created by, to any of the nearby properties. The, um, original footprint of the shed is already existing and has not been complained about and we've not gotten any complaints about the addition to the shed. Um, it's also not coming any closer to the rear lot line than the original footprint of the shed, it's just extending the length of it along that lot line further. Um, the benefit is not achievable by any other method. Technically, yes, if you wanted to tear that shed down and move it. But then, the backyard of that house is, is a very small backyard and bringing it in fifteen feet from both the side in the rear setback would, would plunk it literally in the middle of the yard. Um, no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. Um, in this case, I'm gonna say difficulty is not self-created because the shed was there when you purchased the house and the previous owner did not either get the permit or a variance for it. Um, it's not an undesirable change in that it will give you more storage space and allow you to, um, have things stored out of sight as opposed to out in the yard. Um, in the request, while significant, um, given the size of the lot and the location and that the lot has a very short backyard, um, I would say it was not significant for this particular piece of property. Any additions, other comments?
Covers it.
I will, um, grant, make a motion to grant an area variance at five ninety-four Adams Road for a shed to the applicant Carl Langham to allow a three point five foot rear setback where fifteen feet is required and a four point five foot setback where fifteen feet is required in conjunction with the expansion of an existing shed on SBL number zero six three point eleven dash four dash sixty-five, um, located in R-three single-family district and that shed being in the southeast corner of that property.
Second.
Mrs. Svollo?
Aye.
Mr. Barun?
Aye.
Mr. Denoto?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Haza?
Aye.
Any other guys, uh, just a couple, couple conditions. Did you, so you applied for building permit already and that's when-
I, I just happened to be having to do the variance, I, I was actually gonna call back Tuesday to, to do the paperwork and then I had to get the variance, so I, I will apply tomorrow.
So, so finish up your building permit application and then, um, you've already started construction, so that one-year meaningful construction doesn't mean anything, so good luck with your project.
Excellent, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I'll start reading.
Yep.
Four sixty-seven Ridge Road Sheds located at four sixty-seven Ridge Road. Applicant Lisa Thompson is requesting area variances to allow a six foot west side setback where fifteen feet is required and a three foot east side setback where fifteen feet is required associated with two existing utility sheds and to allow the second utility shed when only one is permitted on a point one two acre parcel having SBL number zero seven eight point one nine dash one dash ten located in an R-three single-family residential district under section two two five dash four eight of the code of the town of Webster.
Hi, if you could state your name and address, please, and just tell us about your project.
Yeah, Lisa Thompson, four sixty-seven Ridge Road. And, uh, it's not a new project, we bought the house two years ago and there was two decorative sheds that I believe the previous owner had built as playhouses and sheds for his family. And so when we purchased the house, he said that he thought they were grandfathered in and I only learned that they weren't when I came to the town with my survey map and I was getting a fence that is permitted put in and, um, the gentleman I talked to said, you know, you might wanna go about getting permits and, um, so here I am. Um, you'll see in the picture, they're decorative, they're beautiful, they're heavy-duty. I did, um, put a new roof on one shed because there was a hole in the roof uh, that cost me also a thousand dollars and I investigated taking the one place, playhouse away. Um, but the woman who owns the private drive was very concerned about, um, bringing a vehicle down that drive to take it away and it would cost me another thousand dollars to do that, I'm selling the house um, right now and I was just seeking the permits to make it easier for the next owner because that's, I like to do business that way, so. They've been there a long time.
I'm sorry, did you say the sheds were there when you bought the house?
Yeah, they've, they've been there a long time. Um, the gentleman before us, I think, owned the house since nineteen eighty-six. I don't know the exact age of the sheds, although I know that the one had a hole in the roof that I had to repair by putting on a new roof. Um, and they're very heavy-duty, they're not flimsy. He was a woodworker, so they're quite, the structures are quite solid. They're like little houses almost.
It looks like you put new roof on one of them.
I did, yeah, that was when I was, my brother's wife wanted to take the one as a playhouse um, and I looked into getting it transported and then finally um, with conversations with the neighbor about using her private drive to try to lift it into that drive. She was unwilling to allow us to go forward and I could never really get the contractor to commit to doing it anyway. So since then, I've been, I've painted, you know, I've been painting them and trying to just, you know, accept that they're there for good. They're, they're really cute.
They, they're well-built, um, I visited the property and actually, Ms. Thompson was home, so I got to go into the backyard and actually see the sheds and, um, they've, they've clearly been there for many years and they're very, very sturdily built, um, on little foundations. Um, I, I, I don't know, well, moving them would be difficult other than in pieces, um, because of the private drive. Um, but they're, they're, they're there and, and the one is tucked into the trees and-
And I did speak to the neighbor who lives next door to us and she, she was, she thought they had been permitted so she was a little disappointed to find out that the previous neighbor had not permitted them but she had no problem with them at all, she thinks they're cute. And there's a tree line that goes along, uh, the fence that I installed and so there's no, really, the only people who see it are the ones who drive down the private drive and they're like little cute little decorative. It's an old house, it's an eighteen nineties house and the fence that I put in was like a ten thousand dollar black decorative fence, so it all just ties together, there's a lot of charm to it and, um, you know, once we put the thousand dollars into the roof, they became even more fond of them.
Yeah, that was the drop, the lot drops off a lot, uh, quite, quite at the back, so I couldn't even see the sheds until I drove down the private drive.
Yeah.
Because it slopes downward.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I certainly, if I had built the sheds, I would have come before you to request permission, but since they were there, you know, and I did explore trying to take one out and it was just a pretty difficult task to, to take on.
I see a pattern developing here in that all these variances are very unusually shaped lots.
Oh yeah, this one's very-
This one, this one comes to a point in the back, it's a triangle, lots of triangle. Yeah, it's sort of bottom and it slopes up towards the house, it's a very unusual lot.
Is the, um, are you requi, are you being required or requested to do this as part of the sale contract?
No, uh, you know, everything's selling like crazy right now, he didn't even ask for an inspection. So, we have no obligation whatsoever, but I know I wanted permits in place and I got the fence permits, I just wanted to try to do the right thing and I was anticipating that someone else would feel the same way, so that's why I put the application in. But, uh, the market is crazy. And we'd feel bad because we put like fifty, we love our house now, but we, we have to move on, so.
Um, he, Dan said something on, on one of the, on one of the other applications, if the sheds ever needs to be rebuilt, it should be rebuilt per code. And I, I'm wondering, I don't even know if we could do this because part of the issue is how do you keep these records? If, if a shed were to be dilapidated to the point where you take it down, it stays down. I mean, I don't know if we could, can we make that part of the, or the variance is just the-
Oh, variance is forever, right?
The variance is forever, yeah.
Problem is, we've had, we've had people before this that had existing structures with multiple sheds on their property and we've had them take them down. I mean, I can't remember an instance where we, we made an exception and, and didn't, didn't grant them a second shed. We've, we've had them combine them, we've had them tie them together, we've, uh, but we've never, I don't think, since I've been on the board, I've never granted a second shed on property. And it is, it is a really unusually, unusual shape-up. I always look at things, if, if, if this was presented, would I have granted this variance for two sheds? I, I wouldn't have.
I, I agree with you to a point in that she kind of inherited this and, um, I, I think it's such, I, you're talking multiple sheds.
I'm talking, uh, for every cleanup issue that we've ever, because in, in every instance that I, that I can remember, as long as I've been on the board, every time we ran into a two-shed scenario, it was always a cleanup issue. It, the, the sheds existed. And I don't think we've ever made an exception where we didn't actually have, um, have them remove one of them or combi, combine them to make it one shed in some way. And I looked at the picture and, and I don't see how that could happen.
That can't be done, so.
It's, it's a shame, they are cute.
Yeah.
But it's- Josh, what's the definition of accessory building?
Well, he's looking for that, did I ask for public comment?
Yeah. No, no, yeah.
Okay, okay, this, this meeting's open, open to the public, anyone wishing to speak for or against this application, you can call in, eight seven two seven zero one one.
And I did send letters to notify folks that, with the picture of the sheds.
I just read that before the meeting, but I didn't memorize it.
I did too, to be honest with you.
Okay, accessory building, a detached building or structure the use of which is incidental to that of the main or principal building or structure and located on the same lot therewith.
Thank you. We can consider one as an accessory building rather than granting a variance and the other one as a shed. And there was no size that was illustrated or given as far as accessory buildings.
I like the-
I, I really hate to grant a variance to permit two sheds on a property. Uh, I think if the board interprets one as accessory building and one as a shed and permits that existing situation.
And then we would still need the setback.
Any further modification to them wouldn't require board approval. That's, that's where I would come from.
So, if we were to do that, then it would be a setback variance rather than just setbacks.
That's correct.
Now, I was reading, I was reading the definition of a shed, it says, as Josh said, incidental, but a shed, I, I, not verbatim, but it basically says should be used for storage of lawn and garden equipment, of, you know, anything that you would need for the maintenance of your property. You do that, right?
Um, the one shed has a mower in it and the other one's tow- The one shed has a mower in it and the other one's totally empty.
Okay, well.
Yeah, you've been good thinking over there.
Yeah, but the point they were making in the code is that in, in, under no circumstances should the shed be occupied by an individual. Okay, that was one of the conditions.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, there's nobody in there.
I, I just read it, so I thought that was interesting. I wouldn't want a new shed, but...
Well, I've seen it happen.
Yeah, well, that's why it's in the code. That's why it's in the code.
But, you know, there again, that's the root. I would hate to see a variance granted for two sheds establishing precedence. I would rather have the board interpret one is accessory building, one is a shed, and deal with the side setback.
That makes sense.
I like that.
And then apply with any further modifications either.
Right, because then if another structure were needed, then a variance would be required because you're allowed one shed and one accessory structure.
Any other discussion? Okay, pursuant to NYCR six seventeen point five in the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I don't think we're going to, I'll close the public portion. I don't think we're going to get any public inquiries on this. It's a, it's an interesting little neighborhood there. I've never driven down that little side of the street. That's kind of cool back there.
Yeah, it's actually beautiful.
I mean, I, I lived, I lived in West Webster growing up, but I never, never went down that street. It's kind of interesting. It's very, very nice area. It's not really out of character to the neighborhood. I'll bet those things have been there for thirty, thirty years.
They're very...
They're very, they're very ornate too, which is kind of interesting.
Yeah, he even has like a fake...
It's a unique, it's a unique neighborhood there. And the way the yards drop off, the sheds are not in view of the street at all. There's no detriment created. They've been there for years and years. There's a fence around the property, they're within the fenced area. The applicant is trying to make, make those sheds, would say codify them, codify, make them legal through a variance. It's really not achievable by any other method, they're just, they're there already. The request is not substantial. The yard is a, is a triangle and it goes right to a point in the back, so the setbacks, it's, you couldn't get setbacks that code requires even if you wanted to, couldn't do it. There's no adverse physical or environmental impacts to this area neighborhood. Difficulty was not really self-created because they were on the property when you purchased it. And she's just trying to make it right. Not an undesirable change. We've had no negative comments from neighbors. So, and the request is not significant. I'll take Don up on, on his suggestion that we call one of the sheds, I don't think it matters which one we do, but call one of them an accessory building and one shed because you're allowed an accessory building and a shed. So that eliminates one variance. Anybody have anything else to add?
No.
No, okay. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to grant an area variance at four sixty-seven Ridge Road to applicant Lisa Thompson to allow a six-foot west side setback where fifteen feet is required and a three-foot east side setback where fifteen feet is required. And to allow, okay, I'm going to eliminate the second utility shed for one shed and one accessory building. Those setbacks apply to one shed and one accessory building. On a point one two acre parcel, have an SPL number zero seven eight point one nine dash one dash ten located in an R three single family residential district under section two twenty-five dash forty-eight of the code of the town of Webster. Do you think it's necessary for us to identify which is which or not really?
I think, I think you should.
Okay.
Maybe the larger one, call the accessory.
Which is the larger one? Are they the same size?
The, uh...
The one to the west, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to call the, the structure to the west is the accessory building.
Is that the white?
And the structure to the east would be the shed.
The one closer to the house.
The one closer to the house is the accessory building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody do better on the motion or anything else?
I think they're covered up. I'll second that.
Okay.
Mr. Berman.
Hi.
Mrs. Vollo.
Aye.
Mr. Hausen.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Mr. Denner.
Aye.
Okay, you have your variance? Nope. Now, question, you don't need a building permit because they're there. I mean, do we need a building permit to?
Yes.
Just to, yeah, we need a building, Josh is saying to the, okay, so you need a building permit for your accessory building and shed, the structure, so he'll come out, just look at him and so on, and so Rob will come out, so apply for the building permit at the, at the town hall, at the building.
Question for you, so our closing date is August fifteenth, would that happen before that date?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, you, you, you might want to go online and get the building permit application online because the town hall is really closed to the public. But they do have that online application and then you could, you could scan it and send it back to the building permit.
Send it out, very good.
With your map, so the map will show.
Josh, you want to warn Rob what the board's decision was so he's aware of that?
Yes, I will do that, okay?
Very good. Thank you so very much, I appreciate it.
Have a good evening, thank you.
I'm picturing his reaction, going, "Why?"
Yeah, no, that's, that's perfect. And there's no place on that lot to put another accessory building anywhere, so...
Application number six.
All right, seven sixty-six Ridge Road Vestibule. Located at seven sixty-six Ridge Road, applicant Andrew Kaptain is requesting an area variance to allow a sixty-foot front setback where seventy-five feet is required, associated with the construction of an eight-foot by six point five-foot front vestibule on a point two five acre parcel having SPL number zero seven nine dash seventeen dash one dash nine, located in a CO commercial outdoor storage district under section two two five dash nineteen B sub five sub A of the code of the town of Webster.
Could you state your name and address, please, and tell us about the project?
My name's Andrew Kaptain, I live at five sixty-one Lake Road, Webster, New York. So I'd like to, um, there's a, there's a dentist office on Ridge Road. And this is about a quarter mile west of Five Mile. It's across the street from Thomas Landscape, next door to the Yale of Storage and next door to Tony's Bridle. And Marina Auto Grove is also across the street. So they're having a problem with handicap access to the building. They're losing patience because they have difficulty getting in. So there's an existing stoop on the front of the building and there's also kind of an unsightly roof structure over that stoop. And those currently project five feet from the building. So we really want to replace those two with a foyer, with a pitched roof. It would be much more attractive with double commercial doors. And then we want to take that sidewalk and just, you know, kind of make it a ramp-type access into the foyer. So I, I have some photographs here, I have four of them. I put a rough outline of where the new foyer would go. And I believe you all have copies of the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, pin it up, we'll pass it on.
Thank you.
You're looking at a concrete ramp? Uh, yeah, the floor of the foyer would be concrete and the ramp is really a sidewalk, so that will all be concrete as well. So there's a, there's a concrete sidewalk there, so we'd just be taking that out and replacing it with a similar type sidewalk, except it would pitch up to the sill of the new foyer.
You're going to combine that with the existing vestibule space that's there or is it a separate vestibule?
Uh, so if you look at the plan, there's a set of double doors on the front of the new foyer. And then there's a second set of double doors that go into the existing waiting room. So we'll have an airlock there. So the existing waiting room is not very large, but it's, it's kind of difficult to maneuver a wheelchair in the waiting room without a proper entry point with, you know, double doors.
The doors then will have a handicapped access mechanical opening?
Uh, we don't have electric openers for the, automatic electric openers for the doors, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
No, we don't have that.
Okay.
So they, they would still have to have assistance from a second person open the doors possibly.
Yeah, it's probably a moot point to the variance anyway.
I, I, I went, I looked at the site and just down the street, there's Lotempio Shoe Repair and so on. And they're about ten or fifteen feet closer to Ridge Road than this building is. And then the car lot, it's Doyle Chevrolet, they have automobiles parked maybe fifteen feet from the road. So as far as the proximity, proximity to Ridge Road, I don't, I don't really see a big issue with that. Those, those are all houses that have been converted to businesses. When Ridge Road was just a little country road, you know? And now, one by one, they're being converted, yeah.
Right.
Handicap access is extremely important today. Our demographic is getting older and older. And, you know, they got, they got a good business there. The parking lot in the back is quite low, so...
Parking lot does slope in the back, yeah.
Where would, is there a parking spot in the front of the building for handicap parking?
Uh, there's a stone area, yes.
Okay. So, so a handicap patient could park in front, can go up this ramp rather than go all the way down back and up around.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. This meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application, our phone number is eight seven two seven zero one one. Pretty straightforward, yeah.
Yeah, you can't put it anywhere else. You need the handicap access ramp. You've got the double doors so that you could get a wheelchair through there.
That's the only entrance to the, to the waiting room. The front door is the only entrance to the waiting room in that, that building, yeah. Pursuant to section six seventeen point five in the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type two seeker. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I don't think we're going to get any comment on this. I'll close the public portion in a minute, bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, the front setback being requested based on what I'm seeing is a neighborhood of thirty-two feet. I know it's advertised for a sixty-foot front setback. The map is quite busy and confusing, but that's what I'm saying. Because the center line, you could see, is identified at right above Ridge on the map. So it establishes the street line as the right-of-way line.
So you're saying the front setback they're requesting is actually not right?
That's, well, it's less than, than it's advertised, we could act on it, but I just want to get an accurate dimension to that regarding an area variance.
So the sixty feet is to the center line of the road, not to the front of the...
That's correct, the street line is the right-of-way line. And like I say, the map is quite, the survey is quite busy and really doesn't provide a dimension to the front of the structure.
Yeah, it's about twenty-seven feet, not sixty.
I'm, I'm scaling there again, scaling, you know, I'm scaling at thirty-one feet.
Is this the best map you have? The map that you...
Yeah, this is, this is the map I have. So at some point, they moved the road south.
Yep.
Quite a bit. So it's, it's a full sixty feet from the edge of the street to the...
You're saying, I think, I'm reading this as a pavement, asphalt, right?
Yeah, it's from the edge of the asphalt on the street, it's a full sixty feet to the existing stoop.
I don't, I don't think anyone's arguing what you're anticipating on doing. We just want, I personally like to have an actual dimension from the right-of-way to the structure.
Well, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. For instrument survey, it's not really clear.
No.
The front, they don't have a tie to the front of the building?
I, I'm not saying anyone.
No, it's not there, you're right. Which is odd, that's important. I think, I think the board is, has no problem with your request for variance, but we really need an accurate dimension from the, not that, we need from the property line, the front property line, not the edge of the pavement, but from the front property line to your, to your new addition. And I don't, I don't, I don't think you could do that in any way except get a surveyor to actually do a new instrument survey. And he could plot your proposed addition on the instrument survey and show us what, what the, exactly the setback is. Because to Don's point, if we, I don't think you're sixty feet back frankly, but if it's like fifty-eight, fifty-nine, then the variance is no good. So, you know, I, I think maybe table your application, get the instrument survey, come back to the board.
Yeah, yeah. So, of course, everyone's very busy. So I did contact the surveyor and, you know, they're, they're working on brushing up the front dimensions of the drawing.
Chairman, we could, we could, we could grant sixty feet. If he has a survey and it's less than that, he's going to have to come back before the board. So we can grant the sixty, so he, so if he surveys it...
But then would he have to make another application? Start all over?
Yeah, he has to make a...
Where's the thing you're saying?
Oh, he can build it.
If his needs end up being less and we grant for the greater, then you could just make a contention upon filing an accurate instrument survey.
Right, so if he surveys it in sixty or greater, he can go out and build it. If it's, if it's, if it's less than sixty, then he's got to come back before the board.
But I think we know it's going to be less than sixty.
I'm just saying.
I think he needs to get instrument survey anyways. Because before he builds this, he's got to know that he's...
He's got to know that, he's got to know where to setback is.
I understand your logic, but I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying, but before this is built, he, he, if he encroaches more than sixty without a survey, then he's got to come back and start rebuilding.
He can't build it. Right. Because we only granted him the sixty feet.
Do you know?
That's what I'm saying, we don't know. Right, we don't know.
But if he granted, he goes, gets a building permit, builds it, and it's only fifty-eight feet or fifty-six.
We can't build it if it's, if it's less than sixty.
Then you got to reapply for the variance and so on.
So you could, so you could build it, if, if we granted it, if, and, and he, and he surveyed it and he, he's got to build it within the confinement of the sixty, and if he need more than that, then he'll have to come back before the board.
But can we put this in there? Do you think he can give you the directions?
He thinks he knows.
Quickly?
We've had, I'm sorry.
So, so this is, this is the planning board, right?
No.
So zoning, I'm sorry, this is a zoning board. And last time I went in front of the planning board, they're requiring me to come up with a different, with a, an altered map. So I have to do that for them?
Oh.
So can you guys pass this and I, I bring that up with them, is that possible?
No, we need, I personally feel we need a dimension. Because we're granting you area variance to a particular dimension to the front setback.
Yeah, we've, we've refused to act on other applications without accurate dimension.
What do you do back in front of the planning board?
I'm, I'm sorry?
When are you scheduled to reappear there?
I'm not sure what the exact date is, but I think we're on schedule.
They're scheduled for next week.
For next week? You're going to have an instrument survey prior to the next planning board meeting?
I hope so.
Okay.
I mean, everyone's really busy, it's hard to get things done, you know, it's crazy out there right now.
Are you confident that sixty-foot number? Are you confident that sixty foot number?
Oh, it's, it's definitely sixty feet from the edge of the asphalt to the stoop.
Yeah, it's just a sixty.
But, you know, I know there's a right of way and there's, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll, I'll bet you're less, I'll bet it's less than sixty, because you're adding a foot in front of the stoop, plus the asphalt, the asphalt.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's probably gonna be like fifty-eight with the, the foyer.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Don, I, I, I think.
Table it.
You're gonna need, you're gonna need instrument survey anyways, so let, let's do this properly and table, were you gonna say something?
I, I'm thinking if we can table it to the twenty-eighth.
Next meeting.
And, and even if, I mean, if you still go before the planning board, I think they can give you a tentative approval pending zoning board approval, I don't think any, I, I don't think I'm hearing that anybody has any opposition to this, but we just can't, we can't approve it without a fixed dimension so that.
It's, it's kinda doing things out of order, but Josh could convey to the planning board what our intention is.
Exactly.
We need a dimension.
I, I don't think that would be out of line. Alright, so we'll table it to twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth, okay, alright.
And just call your surveyor tomorrow and say, oh yeah, we need this.
Oh yeah, it's, yeah, I called him a week ago, so, you know.
Okay, alright, I appreciate, so, say I request a table to the twenty-eighth?
I request a table to the twenty-eighth.
Accepted, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, alright, can I get those pictures back, or do you got?
They are.
Of those, or?
No, they're in here.
Okay, very good.
I agree with Don.
Right.
I thought it was, I understand the Michael part, I was trying to get him, we were.
Number seven.
You've been doing this a whole lot longer than anybody if you're, if you're.
Alright.
I, I don't know.
Are you, want me to start reading? Okay.
Sure.
Six five four Ridge Road Garage. Located at six fifty-four Ridge Road, applicant Sal Salafia is requesting area variances to allow a three point five foot side setback where twenty feet is required, associated with the reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming storage garage that was damaged by a downed tree limb and to allow a second accessory structure where only one is allowed on a one point two acre parcel having SBL number zero seven eight point two zero dash one dash three two, located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under sections two two five dash seventeen B sub five sub E and two two five dash thirty-six A of the code of the town of Webster.
If you can say your name and address and tell us about your project, please.
I'm Nujah Salafia, I'm the dad of Sal, that owns the building, he's out of town and he was helped out.
So a tree fell on a building and crushed it or something?
I'm sorry?
Did the case say a tree fell on the building and crushed the building or?
We applied for the permit about a year ago, in two thousand nineteen, and because we bought a lot of the building and applied, we were concentrating on making the move to the bigger buildings and we kinda let the, the permit go. In the process, I mean, this is a one hundred year old building, and out of me ninety-nine, it was built in nineteen twenty. And uh, I don't think there was ever any maintenance that was done in the building, there was big huge holes in the building, the water would come in from uh, the top of the hill and go right through the building. And the construction, from the pictures that we provided, it had five foot and center two by fours. That resulted by rotten boards that had been exposed to the elements for years and years and years. So the permit, the idea was to just, let's make it purtier and let's reinforce it and let's put up a new building. When we started taking it apart, uh, besides the fact that during the course of time, a tree fell, a branch of the tree fell right inside the building again, when we started taking it apart, the whole thing collapsed. Because of the age and because of the length of maintenance that he has had, I mean, some of the, some of the pictures that you could see over there, it's uh, you know, it gives you a clear identification of what it was all about. We're not interested to make it bigger, we're gonna keep it in the same footprint, and all of a sudden, you know, we got material over there, the material's been sitting in the weather for probably a couple of months, we're ready to put it back up and, and we got a stop order. Now, we were being very reluctant on taking the building down, we're doing it a little by little, but it got to just to the point that things were falling apart. We got, we got probably about an eight foot, a ten foot area that is standing up, that only knows how, uh, because nothing is holding it. So, we're not interested to make it bigger, we only wanna put it right where it used to be, the way that it was permitted and the way that was given the permission through uh, through the permit to uh, reinforce it and make a building that we could use.
Now, it looks, it looks like there's new masonry. Did you imagine, did you imagine?
The masonry was an idea in the favor, because we're on, we're on the downhill from the driveway and it says the water is gonna go back into the building again, if I put a small block on the bottom, then you might be able to put in like a ramp or cement to try to disperse the water to go away from coming in inside the building, because the way that the building is and the platform is, it's below grade and when it rains, the water goes right inside the building again. So it was not to make it, it was just to make a better structure and to protect it from the elements, but not to make it purtier, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't do anything in there.
So you're saying the footprint of the new structure is exactly the same as the footprint of the.
Right, we're gonna do any foundational work whatsoever. I mean, if I have to, I could do without putting in the one block, which is I think only a two inch solid block, and then put the wall right on top of it just to uh, get the water not to come in inside the building. But I don't have to do that, I mean, if I have to, I can excavate in front of it and create a swall, a deeper swall, put in uh, some kind of a pipe to uh, collect the water and let it drain out away from the building. It's gonna be on the same footprint, just the way it was and just the way we were permitted to fix it and put it back on again.
Now, I, I see a copy of a permit here that says to rebuild garage.
And that's, that's all we're hoping to do and that's the way we started out, but again, if you look at some of those pictures over there, the holes, you know, you could, you could, you could shoot a missile right through the center of the building over there, you're not gonna hurt the building because the holes were that big. The tree did, it made it even worse, but the construction of literally a hundred years ago, it had two by fours and you could see them, you could see them over there, they were five foot and center, there was no support.
I, I guess what I'm saying is rebuild garage is pretty generic, I mean, it could mean tear it down or rebuild it, or repair it, it doesn't say repair garage, it says rebuild garage, so it almost seems as if the permit is applicable. I don't, maybe I'm, and in other words, it's not, it's not that specific.
Well, we had several meetings with the town because we were new in this game over here in terms of uh, rebuilding a garage like this, and I mean, they kinda gave me the impression, Don was there and he was very instrumental in helping us out, that, you know, yeah, what, what you're gonna do, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna make it safer, it's gonna make it, the, the building was dangerous, I mean, if kids would have gone in there, somebody would have gone in there, you know, you got, you got nails that were hanging down, boards that were hanging down, I can't imagine why, you know, if.
So is this permit I see, the permit I see is after it came down?
No, the, the permit was actually, uh, we applied for the permit, I think in two thousand nineteen, at the end of two thousand nineteen or early two thousand and twenty.
Which is five, five twenty-seven, twenty twenty is the date on it.
Okay, it was maybe about six months ago or so, maybe a little longer, I forget the date. Uh, it just that, because we were busy with the new constructions of another building that we bought, we just said, okay, let it go for now, let's move, take the move into the bigger building that we needed, we'll just do that as soon as we're done, so we got done with the other construction, okay, let's start working on it. In the meanwhile, the six months, just because of the elements and the tree that fell on top of it, it just made it, made it worse.
So I'm not sure now.
This is, uh, the applica, are you referring to this? This is just the application form the gentleman filled out, there's nothing that has town um, approvals on it that I can see. It's, it's not a building permit, it's a, just an application filled out by the applicant.
So permit was never, not issued, just the application, not, not issued. So it doesn't have the stamp on it, paid issue, okay, I understand, so.
I got the permit.
Okay, yeah.
I'm looking for it, that's, that's why.
Yeah, cause I know we paid for the permit, it's, it's, it's in there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There was a permit issued in late September of twenty nineteen, um, which it was originally for a small roof repair. And then once they got into the repair, the damage became so much.
So I'm just looking at as the second permit application, which is a more extensive job.
Correct.
Okay. So once the building came down, the building department said, hey, you're too close to the sideline.
Is this uh, is that, is this property on sanitary source?
No.
So there's leach problem. The leach fields are a problem in the back.
To the best of our knowledge, the leach fields don't go all the way to the building, I think they, they go, they're in the grass area.
Right, which is located.
On the side of, on the side of the house. The leach fields never came up, because we were building it in the same position, all we were doing is we were picking, we were picking up something, we were stalling, eliminating, and we were putting in a new structure. Or the reinforced structure, at least that's all we hoped and we're gonna do, we didn't wanna spend the extra money, but the whole thing fell, fell apart.
So where are the leach signs?
I thought the leach signs went out to the north of this structure.
The north of the garage?
Yes. I'm sorry, there is no north line on this.
No.
No, they're nowhere.
Okay.
There is a building, yes.
Okay, so you see where Ridge Road is? This whole property line, that property's, wow, how many acres? So almost an acre?
Yeah.
Yeah, deep, it's one point two.
Yeah, it's deep.
And I believe those leach signs are located, if you're holding your map up, because there's no really reference point, they're located to the right of the garage, that's highlighted.
There's two garages though.
Yes, there are two garages, this is an MC district. Are, are you tearing this, are you tearing down more than fifty percent of this building?
More than fifty percent of the building fell down.
Oh yeah, it's got.
All it's left is.
Bradley helped it.
All there's left is just a wall.
Yeah, fifty percent's the number.
That's.
I'm gonna start from scratch, yeah.
So, let's see here. If, if the structure, I'm trying to pay, if the structure is going on the same footprint, identically as. And the existing structure doesn't um, doesn't obstruct or, or, doesn't come into play with the leach fields. The new structure going on the same footprint, which is, if I'm looking at the drawing correctly, is the same twenty by forty as the old one. Is there, is there, is it gonna come into conflict with the existing leach field? It should, and, and because the other one would. Correct? My, my thinking?
I don't know. I'm, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, if it's more if the cost is gonna be equal or a little bit more because of the for, for a structure to be reconstructed properly, I would rather see a, the new structure be comply with the ordinance.
I, 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 I agree with that.
And I think we'd be doing the applicant a favor in doing so for any future use of that building or this property. Not knowing where the leach field's located, uh, we don't know if there's a conflict with that, that's where I'm coming from.
Well, leach field probably is not between the two garages.
Well, there may be a pipe there, but if a leach field's located somewhere within the close vicinity of that, and it's, and it's a conflict. You know, that, that'll sway me one way or the other, but I'm looking at the cost analysis and what the future use of this property can be uh, in compliance with the uh, ordinance.
So. Dan, I'm looking at it, Mr. was surveying earlier, the, the house itself is forty feet, then it's probably another thirty feet to the road, and maybe there is twenty more feet of grass, I got close of a hundred feet of grass, that if there is any issue with the leach fields, I can put the leach fields in.
You just did yourself a disservice.
Well, they, they have minimums, you gotta be so far from the house, so far from the driveway, you gotta, you know, there's so many, there's so many restrictions, Monroe County Health. Monroe County Health is pretty restricted.
Line now, I gotta pick up and I gotta move the whole set distances up as else?
Well, there's a, there's a huge, I mean, it would be gravity to the back of the property, cause it drifts, it, you know, it slopes away.
Right.
That would, that would make sense to go to the rear with the leach field.
I'm sorry, I wasn't understanding your uh. You're, you're saying that leach field's to the side of the house?
On the side of the house, the big, big grass.
Maybe the tank is there, but leach, I doubt that the leach field is located there, cause there isn't enough surface area for the leach.
Well, you, you gotta be ten feet from the house with the septic tank, then you gotta be ten feet from the tank to the leach field, you got pavement all around it, so there's no place, so I, I, that would be a long shot, real long shot.
Yes.
Yeah, there's not enough room.
I don't know much, I don't know much room it needs, but according to the survey over here, I'm reading that I got about thirty feet.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's way too tight, I, I noticed two uh, is that a, is that gonna be a business or a residence, that house?
We're gonna use it for whatever legal, illegal uh, use we can get.
Yeah, I see two flues, it's got, it's a double right now, is it two?
No, it's a single family home. It's not a double.
Okay, I just saw two furnace flues coming out, I just thought maybe.
In there?
Yeah.
Well, this is where your bird business was, was it not?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't this where your bird business was located?
Put in, put in an extra furnace.
So it's no longer a single family house, it's a commercial, it's, it's a commercial uh, structure, okay?
But it's still, I mean, everything is there, the kitchen, the bathroom.
I understand that, I understand that, but once your bird business occupied that, that residential use was now a void, because now it's a commercial.
I wanted to use it back as a residence, I gotta get a variance?
You're gonna need a variance, cause it's residential, single family residence is not permitted in MC district.
Yeah, I've, I've been there before.
I thought we explained this a long time ago, um. But, I'm sorry.
It sounds, it sounds like we need, we need more information, I mean.
Uh, yeah, I know where the leach field's located to see if it would interfere with that leach field, I mean.
Yeah, because one of the points Mr. Alzam made is that, once you take down more than fifty percent of the structure, it's considered a brand new build. In other words, the old footprint really doesn't.
Even though the reason why we had to take it down is because it was an act of nature?
Well, that's, that's.
I mean, what difference would it made if I would add a fire?
Yeah, that's.
I got a tree that fell down.
That's, that's not part of our, it's part of the building code, it's not, not, not something.
Yeah, but I looked at the building code, cause we've had the conversation with Josh and uh, and he says, you know, show us proof that there was, and we went to get the, we went to get the pictures of the tree, it ran inside the building over there, we had, that made it, that made it worse, causing it to uh, to, for things to collapse instead of standing up. We had an act of nature over and above the intention that we had, we wanted to do. I mean, what, what difference would it made if I would add a fire, I says, okay, I'm gonna rebuild it, and then, you know, the fire took three quarters of it out, now it's very new, because three quarters of the fire.
That's, that's, that's exactly right, the house burns down, we have to build it to the new code, that's exactly right. We can't build it to the old code, we have to build it to the new code. That's, that's just, that's just the way the, the building code is, is written, but um, I think, to, to Don's point, I think it'd be nice to have a map showing where the leach fields are, cause we're not sure exactly. I, I think you, I think maybe go back to Rod Potter and ask him about the fifty percent rule and see if he's, you know, see if. and ask him about the fifty percent rule, and see if he's, you know, see if he, he agrees with what we're saying.
There's no doubt in my mind, he, he agrees with you. I mean, it's one of the reasons why I'm over here right now, uh, that Rod agrees, and stopped everything, not to do anything. That's why I'm here, I'm here because I had planned the building in the same, in the same location. I'm not going over where leach fields might be or might not be, I'm not touching the leach fields, I'm building it in the same location. If the building wouldn't have collapsed, would we be talking about leach fields right now?
No, we wouldn't.
Why are we talking about leach fields, we're something that is going in the same footprint.
Because we're not going to let you put it in the same footprint if we can move it to a different location and bring it into code. Is why we're discussing where the leach field is right now.
Yeah, other than I read.
As only fifty percent of the building came down, it's no longer considered an existing structure. You're starting over from ground zero. We would not allow this side setback if you came in with a new building.
I appreciate that. Yeah, originally, I wanted to put up a big building over there. And the big building over there would not be allowed, because I already had a garage in there. And it was suggested, if you could keep it in the same footprint, then you don't have to worry about, uh, getting variances and getting this. Now, I got six thousand dollars lumber, it's been sitting there for three months, that has specifically been designed for the footprint of this building, and now we're talking about a new different building. Well, that's what I wanted to do to begin with, and I was told no.
Was it, is it a prepad?
Huh?
Are you doing a prepad?
I could have added a building, I couldn't have.
I could have done a prepay, a prepay, I could have done something, I could have used a hundred foot.
Well, you know, you just said, you just told us that you had lumber sitting there, specifically built for this.
For this building.
There's trusses sitting in the driveway.
There's trusses.
There's, there's twenty.
Okay, but those trusses could be utilized.
Yeah, I just, we're not, we're not trying to give you a hard time.
No, I'm not. You understand it from where I'm coming from, because if I was gonna build it in the back, and I would have had less restrictions, I wouldn't have put up a twenty by forty, it's a worthless building. It's a small shed, is what it is. I would have put up a good-sized building. And originally, that's what I wanted to do, so in conversation that I had with the.
What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to save you money. I'm trying to look at the big picture, rather than the little picture. You have an acre and a half of land in a commercial district. This, you put this building back where you're proposing to put it, it's going to block any further development of the rest of your property. Are you going to box yourself in like that?
It's not my intent, my intent was to have.
I, I understand that, I'm trying to do you a favor.
I appreciate it.
Okay, because if you're gonna spend good money after bad money, that, that's what you're gonna do, right here.
Yeah, actually, no, we didn't even get a vehicle back there, driveway or anything like.
Absolutely.
Uh, earlier this evening, we had an application where they wanted to put a, a, a garage, exactly where it was before, exactly where we, and then we made them move it over. They wanted to build it on the same footprint that it was, but it was too close to the lot line. So, we're not, we're being consistent, frankly. I don't know.
You know, I would agree with you a hundred percent, and I appreciate you taking that and that probably would have been the right thing, ten months ago, a year ago. But, we don't have any use for this land and development and all this thing. Someday, somebody's gotta knock down a five, seven thousand dollar garage, and get access to the land. If the land becomes a w, a blessing, do it, even if it's, if it's the one that I gotta do. Right now, I was looking for the simplest way to just get it done. I got a building over there that was falling down, totally razed and a hundred years old. And I says, okay, I'm gonna make this safe, so I can use it for storage, I can do something. And because I went that path, I'm way past the path. I applied for the permit, I bought the material, it's all, it's all ready to go, and then all of a sudden, you know, stop, and now I gotta think about developing it.
Okay, great, you're boxing yourself in, just for the record, thank you.
You know, and I, and I appreciate where you're coming from, but you know, if you see where you're coming from too.
I understand, I understand, I just want, I want you to realize, we're trying to do you a favor. Okay? And as long as you realize you're boxing yourself in on this property, great, let the, let the record show that.
I can get the variance, I'd be happy to just box, box myself in and get it done.
Extension of pre-existing non-conformance.
All right. What about, honestly, I, I'd like to confer with, uh, the building department. I, I just wanna get a little more history and so on. I, I just, for my own, I, I wanna make a good decision.
Right.
And, um, if, you know, if you wouldn't mind tabling to the next meeting, give me a chance to just chat with.
I prefer not to, and Josh has been involved, because we've had several meetings with him, and he probably can answer any questions, because he's had that conversation with Rod and everybody involved, because we're hoping not to get to this point over here, it's not something I like to do. So, uh, maybe he can answer any questions that you have, and take a shortcut. I mean, I'm here to get the permit if it could be done. And allow me to just, you know, give it one last shot, and if, if I get it, fine, if I cannot get it, then, so, yeah. But he might be able to have all the answers, because he's in charge, and he's the one that is, that has been involved with it.
Now, I don't know how familiar you are, you are with the building code, because you're in a different, I mean, you, what you're doing is zoning, different than building code. Do you know for sure about the fifty percent rule, as far as building comes down like that?
I can't speak to that.
See, that's what I, that's what I thought.
The building code, portion of it.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, but I wanna make sure before I make a decision, so. I don't, how, how does the rest of the board feel, I haven't, well, I haven't heard from the rest of them.
I'm going by the comments that, that I've heard, I mean, he basically said he was gonna tear the whole building down, and if, if, if the, the dimensions were a problem, we talked about excavating around the existing foundation. I mean, that's, that's starting from scratch.
No, 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 we would never add any intention of excavating, there's zero excavation, there's no.
What did you use that, that, you used that terminology?
When the building, when the building fell down, instead of putting the, uh, two by fours or, uh, the plate on the floor, we're gonna put it on a little block, a little, two-inch block, just to get a little bit more elevation with something that would not rot. There is no movement of foundation, you go there and see it. I mean, we're gonna build the right and the existing one-hundred-year-old structure, right on the footers. Right on the footers, exactly. I mean, all the material, all the specs, the, the drawings that I have over there tells you it's a twenty by forty. If, if I make it twenty by fifty, I'm gonna be up in the air, because there is a, there is a, uh, a five-foot drop in the back, in the back of the building. There is no excavation work that has been done. I was doing it just the way I thought that I had the okay to, to do it, until time and other issues came, came across over there, and, uh, and the building totally got more disintegrated.
Misunderstood the.
No, I know, you're mistaken, it, it, it might have been me, I just wanted to clarify.
I, I don't have a problem with it, if the applicant realizes it's boxing himself in.
I, I understand.
Extension of pre-existing non-conformance. Building codes that we comply with, no matter what. There again, mainly was for the record, I wanted to.
So, what you're saying is, let's just deal with the variance issue, the setback issue, and let the building department deal with the building.
Because my initial intent was, if you're going to spend all that money, why not locate it in this area that could be better utilized? And that's the favor I was, I was trying to, uh, point out.
If it's going right on the same footprint, same dimensions as, as existing, I'm not, I don't, I'm not familiar with the fifty percent, or else I can't.
Well, it's meant to comply with that anyway.
I mean, he answered, he's answered all the questions that I had.
I, I understand where you're coming from, but that's, I mean, we, we, we can't plan for the future for the applicant.
We, we try sometimes.
I think your point's well taken, there's a.
There again, I just.
That you're not gonna be able to access. As far as the setback goes, if that building was there for that long, without, without an issue, and. He does have, was it three feet?
Three and a half.
Yes, three and a half. Three and a half feet, and it's less than we like to see inside of a building, but he can get around it.
Well, that's gonna have to be non-combustible material, because five feet's required.
Yep.
There again, the.
I could do a little drywall, or, uh, I could do it with the, the exterior wall, I could do it with, uh, boards. Uh, favorable, not favorable boards, that's the problem.
There again, that's gonna be a building, building code issue.
Yeah, Rod and I had, had already had a discussion about that, so he's aware.
Yeah, I don't think that's the board's concern.
My extension of pre-existing non-conformance.
I think, I think if, if that building was there, for how many years?
Literally, it was built in nineteen twenty.
And he's on exactly the same footprint, and he realizes that he's boxing himself in and so on and so forth. And I, I saw the foundation, it looks like exactly the same place it was. Matter of fact, there's a wall, it's still up there, there's a wall, it's still there. One whole wall. I, I don't have a problem with it, because if he was able to repair it, we wouldn't even be sitting here.
Exactly.
If he was able to repair it, as you originally intended, he wouldn't be here talking to us.
Right.
So, that, that's my, that's my, that's my. Even though, even though we might build it differently, that's our personal opinion, opinions don't count, so.
No, right.
Yeah, right. You follow my logic to that?
Yeah.
If he was able to repair it, he wouldn't be standing in front of us right now.
Right.
Okay. Did I call for public comment, I don't know if I did.
No, you did.
Um, this meeting is open to the public, anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. Our phone number is eight seven two seven zero one one. And in the meantime, it's an area variance, so, uh, pursuant to NYCR six seventeen point five, Environmental Code, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
I, can I?
Of course.
Interject? I would rather the board look at it as extension of pre-existing non-conformance, and not to grant the variances.
So, we could declare that pre-existing non-conforming and avoid the variance? Just, just with the condition that it's constructed.
I believe two two five one hundred, uh, requires a pre-existing non-conforming building to receive approval from the zoning board appeals.
Now.
Or is it ninety-nine, I forget.
With respect, with respect to the setback, with respect to the side setback. We say counsel.
You could have made that same determination administratively, right? No, the code, uh, requires an extension, uh, any reconstruction of a structure that's pre-existing non-conforming, receiving the board's, zoning board's approval.
How does that play out if, uh, for, uh, for a sale of the property, though? Does, uh.
The sale of property?
Yeah.
It's, it's not on the record, it's not written in the record that the zoning board acted on.
Pre-existing non-conforming?
That's right. Yeah, I, I believe it's two two five one hundred, or ninety-nine, I forget. What are those?
Yeah, the, that, that building predated the code.
Yeah.
By a lot.
Mm-hmm.
By a lot. Fairness.
No, it's. Two two five. Yep. Two two five one oh two?
Yeah, it's close. Or ninety-eight. Two two five dash ninety-eight is one that we thought might apply.
How do you determine pre-existing, you have to know when the code was passed with respect to the date the building was built?
Yeah.
So, there's a little bit of research there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Does that have anything to do with the fifty percent?
No, it's a different category.
Has nothing to do with it?
Yes.
Because the same, I mean, the foundation and the footers are, are pre-existing non-conforming, but the structure's gonna be brand-new. A hundred percent brand.
Well, what they're asking for is permission to.
To rebuild the existing.
To rebuild it.
It was a one-story structure before?
Yes.
And it's going to be a one-story structure now?
It's gonna be, yes.
Okay.
And the use of it will be for?
Probably, probably storage, or my, my renter for storage, uh, for something. I mean, we have a lot of expenses with what we're doing, and, uh, you know, we're gonna try to reduce some expenses that we have. I mean, my, my son is strongly committed at the town, he lives on Water Sound, and we got three properties that he's paying big taxes on and everything else. And we, we be getting permits every step of the way. It's not like we're doing things at night, or at the weekend, when nobody sees us. You know, the building in Empire Boulevard was done with the permits, the, the house next door, we used to own it, we did everything with permits. And this one here, it, we got, we got the permit too, it's just that.
So, two two five, I'm sorry, yeah, two two five nine eight D, like David. Non-conforming building, damaged by fire or other causes, may be restored, or repaired, or rebuilt, within a period of six months. When was this, uh, what's it, was a tree fell on?
Yeah.
How long ago?
Probably within the six-month period. We got the permit, uh, at the beginning of the year, and the tree was, it was not in the building yet. It happened during the time that we were waiting to get to it.
We've run into situations where we, in other towns, where if we're doing a remodel, and we leave the wall up, that's the offending wall too close to the lot line, we could keep going. He still has a wall line?
I, I know, but I, I think, I think it was one hundred, two two five one hundred, which required any.
Reconstruction around.
Reconstruction of pre-existing non-conforming structures to receive zoning board approval. Right, a non-conforming building, a structure may not be reconstructed, altered during its life, except with the approval of the zoning board. I think that's one hundred. Yes.
So, it is a pre-existing non-conforming, but you still need the blessing of the zoning board to reconstruct.
That's correct.
Is what the code is saying.
This is a garage, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, that's fine.
Yeah, and this way you know, I mean, it has to be rebuilt within the envelope of the existing foundation.
Well, yeah, this testimony says it is exactly the same footprint.
That's correct, and no dimensions have to be given to the side, or the rear, uh, front or back.
The only, the only setback's the side, that's.
That's the only reason.
We don't, we don't have to bother that. You just have to grant the blessings to, uh, be able to reconstruct the structure at this location, within the confines of that foundation.
But these stoneies are approved.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but we're not granting area variance?
No.
We're just grandfathering it in?
That's right.
All right, well.
I think you should actually read in the record that maintain the existing setbacks as they are.
Nobody's called in, so I'll close the public portion. I guess this doesn't even require the standards for variance, all we need to do is cite the code, make a motion citing that code to allow them to rebuild the structure on the exact same footprint.
That's right.
Okay.
So moved.
I guess I said it, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. Anybody else have any other comment before we vote on? Okay.
The only comment I would do is indicate which garage is being reconstructed, find the mentions to that, and that's the forty by.
Twenty by forty. Forty by twenty, I believe it was.
Forty by twenty. Forty by twenty.
Yep. On this, on the exact same footprint that it was.
It's the northeast garage.
Do we have a second, you second, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on it?
Hey, Mr. Barone?
Hi.
Mr. Snyder?
Hi.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Vollo?
Aye.
Mr. Denoto?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Zlott, we, we got there.
They got my dog, saves the day.
Good luck. Yeah, go ahead and finalize your building permit, please.
Well, I gotta go back for, uh, to buy the building.
Yes, you have to obtain, you have to get the building permit, yes. That, that application you made might, it might just, it might just process that now that you have this approval of the zoning board.
We don't get involved, you're gonna have to comply with the New York State Building Code. We don't get involved, you're gonna have to comply with New York State Building Code. We, we just gave you the...
With the setback, that's just to put it right where it was.
You grandfathered it in, right?
Building, 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 I gotta find, see what...
Right.
So I can make again in, uh, in the...
Okay.
Thank you, good night.
That concludes tonight's meeting, thanks for watching. The next meeting is the twenty-eighth, correct?
Twenty-eighth, yes.
We'll see you on the twenty-eighth. Yep. Thank you.